Justin Doyle, owner of Archive Coffee and Bar.
City Councilor Brad Nanki, Ward 3, 15 years ago it was downtown, now it's not.
Lori Miller, the Equitable Center and DAB member.
Stephen Coy, Ward 4.
Paul Gaylor, member of DAB, downtown property owner and resides salmon run.
Welcome everyone and thank you for taking your time to be with us this evening and also for the time that you take all year long on the DAB.
Fifteen years ago it was downtown, now it's not.
You're a great board and we depend on you a tremendous amount. Shereen Wargren is going to be giving a staff presentation and I'm going to let you take it away.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and Agency Board members. I just wanted to take a moment and provide some background information for our work session this evening. The riverfront downtown urban renewal area was established in 1975 and is 290 acres in size. The north boundary is Hood Street, south is Trade, west is Willamette River, and east is the middle of Church Street. Property values in the urban renewal area in 1975 were 43 million. In 2014-15, they are 282 million. Since its creation, tax increment funds have been used to build three parking garages, environmental cleanup that resulted in Riverfront Park. We assembled more than 11 properties that were redeveloped into Broadway, Town Square, Broadway Commons and affordable housing in the north downtown area. We also purchased a motel restaurant in downtown for the development of the Salem Convention Center and funded the restoration of the Union Street Historic Railroad Bridge, High Street Water Infrastructure, Front Street Bypass, and most recently the Peter Courtney Mental Island Pedestrian Bridge. Tax increment funds were used to support a bond for the construction of the Salem Convention Center. This debt obligation in conjunction with the economic downturn reduced the amount of tax increment available for projects in most recent years. In order to prepare for additional tax increment funds becoming available when the Convention Center debt retires in 2018, the Downtown Advisory Board created a subcommittee, of which the mayor was on, thank you, to work with consultants to develop a downtown strategic action plan which would inform future investments of riverfront funds. In 2011, the Urban Renewal Board approved the downtown strategic action plan which looks strategically at the entire urban renewal area and identifies the unique strengths and challenges within its boundaries. Those also include the importance of connectivity to the areas outside of the URA such as the Capitol, West Salem and Willamette University. The plan includes project and budget recommendations in five unique areas within the urban renewal boundaries. Historic Core, Midtown, which is where Salem Center is, Riverfront Park, North Downtown and North Waterfront. Project recommendations take into consideration future bonding capacity of 20 to 30 million in 2018 when the Convention Center debt is retired. Over the last four years, the downtown strategic action plan has guided DAB's project and funding recommendations in the annual budget process. In fiscal year 2015 and 16, DAB recommended an agency board approved 2.5 million of urban renewal funds to be allocated for opportunity purchases. The Downtown Advisory Board has been discussing ideas for how they could assist the agency board in prioritizing the type or types of projects that would receive opportunity purchase funding consideration. The following are some ideas that we've been talking about as far as the types of items that could be considered in determining funding project priorities. Location preference, north downtown, mid downtown, historic downtown, other. Relationship to other strategic plan goals, for example, central Salem mobility study recommendations, north downtown housing study. Cost, size of opportunity purchase leverage, impact on riverfront downtown urban renewal tax increment, connectivity, infrastructure, benefits to property owners' businesses, job creation, type of uses, mix, housing, commercial. There are a couple of ideas that were discussed for how the 2.5 million in opportunity funds might be used. They include identifying potential properties for purchase. If opportunity funds are used to purchase a site, DAB could work with staff to prepare a project outline for agency board consideration that would be used to guide the project scope of a request for proposal to sell the property. Or some or all of the opportunity purchase funds could be marketed to the development community through an RFP and DAB could work with staff to prepare a project outline for agency board consideration that would guide the scope of the project to be selected. In addition to the items listed previously that could be considered when identifying opportunity purchase, the following are some additional considerations that we came up with. Fiscal year 2015-16 council goal to encourage a range of housing types and sizes at a range of affordability levels. Fiscal year 2015-16 council goal to purchase property just for redevelopment along Front Street and in North Salem, continue north downtown redevelopment. The north downtown housing study indicated that based on current market conditions, significant subsidies would be required to incent housing development in north downtown at this time. And we also wanted to just remind you that an allocation of tax increment funds over 750 may trigger a prevailing wage requirement for the developer. The Downtown Advisory Board is committed to working collaboratively with the agency board to achieve council goals and objectives in the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Plan and Downtown Strategic Action Plan. The board is comprised of individuals with expertise in the commercial real estate industry, including the following. Property business owner, real estate developer, commercial broker, architect, resident, financial and education institution, and property management. We look forward to this discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. I didn't want to talk at the same time, I apologize.
I have a quick question for staff and that is, do you have any priority prioritization as to what you want us to discuss in particular this evening?
The priorities for this evening are, we would like to get your direction input on the role we could play for you in putting out the 2.5 million in opportunity purchases to help identify the projects to use those funds.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I want to turn to the Chair, Chris Bryant of the DAB, and ask if you have a particular message for us or some remarks?
Thank you, Mayor. The main thing that we would like to do is have this be a kind of starting point in all the relationship with the agency board because we feel that we do have a strong set of expertise surrounding something specifically like this in purchasing or acquiring property and reconfiguring it to basically be something that we know will really benefit the downtown area and the city of Salem. And so, number one, we appreciate you guys taking the time to meet with us. And secondly, we just hope to start that relationship and be able to be involved in the process beyond just earmarking the 2.5 million for acquisition.
Excellent, well that's a big help to us because your expertise is exactly why each one of you was specifically appointed to the DAB. So you're a tremendous resource for us. I wonder if we might look at particular properties that are available in the downtown area? That might be one way that we could begin our conversation, just a minute, I'm not done yet here. And, or there may be other priorities with regard to businesses that you particularly want to talk about in the downtown area as far as what you'd like to attract or what you think are tremendous opportunities that we're maybe haven't really been aware of so far. And I heard something over here, I also want to give Chuck Bennett, who's the counselor for this ward for downtown, a chance to speak also. And then Jennifer, did you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, let's hear from Chuck and then Jennifer.
The last time we looked at properties, we were able to get the, to discuss and move forward on that side of the Les Newman and be able to put that piece of property together into a single unit, I thought that was a good beginning. I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm just not.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And then there were a couple of other things that have come up that are sort of unrelated to property I wanted to just check in on. I had gotten a request for information from a constituent on apparently one of your, this is the way it was presented to me, so you can tell me all wrong because they can be sometimes wrong. A technology, 2.1 million dollar, I couldn't tell from the note I got, but some sort of technology downtown, I was curious about that, if there's, anyone knows what even the reference could be. And, the other is, I visited with a former member of the board today who asked me about art and where the, where we are on putting plans in place on the various corners that they felt that, they're involved with the Art Commission and wanted to know kind of what was going on in that particular area, sort of a vibrancy type issue. And I thought I'd just check in on those. And I hate to divert the attention, but there were just a couple of things that came up in the past day that I thought I ought to check on.
Is the technology question one about an opportunity for more advanced technology downtown or the need for it? No doubt, yeah, no doubt.
I'll just quote the email I got, I'm not sure what to think about it. I was saying, I don't know anything about it, in reply to an earlier email. It specifically, it references in the DAB budget report for fiscal year 2016 downtown technology, 2.1 million. And I have no problem saying must have been the wrong budget you were looking at. It could well have been, okay, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be exciting any knowledge here.
I have the riverfront budget and we don't have that line item in our, in our budget and we didn't have a discussion about any type of project like that last fall when we prepared this.
Great, thank you.
All right, Jennifer Martin, and thank you for being the previous chair.
Thank you. So, to, I think, piggyback a little bit on what Christian had to say. We did not want to come here today with a preconceived notion and imply a bottom-up philosophy for this process. We really wanted to come here with an open mind and we actually hesitated in saying, oh, well, this site's on it for sale and this site's for sale because we don't want to get pigeonholed in the public sector competing necessarily with the private sector because we all know the private sector can respond more quickly just to the real property acquisition process in total. I think we wanted more to understand and make sure that the agency felt comfortable that we were there to help facilitate the goals of the strategic action plan and we're finally at a point budgetarily where we can make something happen. And, and we all feel very, very good about our role on the Downtown Advisory Board as it relates to that and really look forward to helping catalyze something in, within the URA. And, and outside of that and the things that Shereen mentioned that have been things that are in the strategic action plan that they hope, the goals and the leveraging and the tax increment, we just wanted to truly understand where the agency felt the priority should be and how we could help facilitate that priority.
Tucker Bennett?
Thank you. Thinking back on discussions we've had before, the most common area for discussion in terms of increment has been, what can we do at the north end? And always the O'Brien property comes into discussion. I don't know what the status of that is, but as you look around downtown for places where we can really have an impact on increment, it appears to be at that end, is that reasonable, Jennifer?
Fair enough. I don't know what the current tax assessed value of that property is. It's obviously a very marquee property in that it's large enough where it can have an immediate impact. Of all of the Delon sites, based on my last update with the listing agent, the main campus there, the, the block face that we all recognize as the Delon property does remain on the market at this point in time. In speaking to the listing agent, he states that the owner of the property is open to alternative structures, whether that's an option or a lease to own or, you know, a long due diligence period to accommodate something, you know, downtown changing. I think that's an offer, you know, something worth discussing. I, I expected that the property would be discussed. There are other sites in downtown that I think we would all like to see more active than they are. Some of those are on the market, some of them aren't, and I don't know that that should limit us.
Counselor Anderson?
Following up on that, Jennifer, you said that there was a lease-to-own option. Do you know if there's any consideration of just some sort of long-term lease, like a 99-year lease or some ground lease like that?
Shereen, if I overstep my bounds, please tell me. I don't believe our urban renewal funds can be used to pay for leasing, is that correct?
I'm going to refer to Natasha on that.
Okay.
Does everyone know Natasha Goodman is Deputy City Attorney here in Salem?
And, and I'm sorry, I can't answer that right now, I'd have to look into that, so I'm sorry.
I must confess, there's a little ulterior motive here too because there's another, there's another potential for that site. And if the owners were to lease it to, say, a municipal organization that might want to put some, something there, a 99-year lease might be another way to keep it on the tax rolls and not involve urban development money. But that's way beyond the scope of what we're doing here. Changing the subject, but it's following up on what Chuck said, you know, talking about the north end. And I've read the 2010, 2011 study. No, I didn't, it was pretty interesting, but I only read, there were like five A through E and I read about three of them and the others I opened up and looked and left. But, you know, to me, and this is one of the goals, is talking about riverfront development. And in that study, it says, I don't have the exact quote, but it's something about the Riverfront Park is one of the most valuable, lovely, Riverfront Park, one of the most valuable, excuse me, valuable assets we have. So I look at the north end and look at what's going on from the Union Street Bridge north still in the URA. You know, is that, that's an area that's kind of industrial now or semi-industrial. Lot of warehouses, lot of stuff that, you know, they're certainly underutilized. So, from my perspective, I'm interested in, you know, if we all say Riverfront Park is the most valuable asset, well, what about if we could extend that somehow, you know, parkland or mixed-use development with riverfront access or some sort of greenway stuff there? So, that's, that's something I'm very interested in.
Let's see, hands up, okay, Christian, and then Counselor Nanki, and then I believe Garth, that he's had it up too.
Real quick, just so it doesn't get missed, I'd like to address Counselor Bennett's question about the art downtown. We do have multiple sites earmarked for art pedestals to be installed. The committee as well, as well as organization that is heading up actually attaining the art itself, they, we've let them know that they definitely have our support and we've earmarked some funds to be, set aside to be able to build some of those pedestals on an ongoing basis. So, it is something that we support. As far as the north downtown, I know personally, my office is right on the edge between downtown and north downtown, right there at Union and Front. Would love to see something like that happen and I definitely share the same opinion that, you know, in just a general waterfront property, you know, you can probably make some big, big changes there. The big thing is just make, waiting for the right opportunity to come up, which I think is why we also want to get this process started, so that way if an opportunity does come up, we can act quickly. I know in prior years when we haven't had these kind of funds and we've kind of had to pick and choose what we're able to fund and everything, didn't really have money to set aside like this, there have been missed opportunities right there on the waterfront in the north downtown. But I think, you know, a lot of it is going to be dictated by just what opportunity shows itself that meets the criteria that we set.
Counselor Nanki, you have a good, good, good point on that.
Thanks, Reverend. It'd be nice if we could get the map back up on the screen as well, maybe. Opportunities may come when people know we have money.
Fair enough.
That, that being said, we also have some federal dollars for Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental site assessments. It could be used in that north area along the river. It'd be lovely to see something on the scale of Broadway happen again somewhere and consolidate all the funds into one spot, but, you know, with fifth of what we put into that, the McGillcrest building is wonderful. But, we need to be cognizant of how much money we have, how much it's going to cost to, if not necessarily purchase said property, to find someone who's interested in developing it that would need some extra funds as well, where we could help them rather than get into property ownership and sale. But sometimes you need to just pick it up and transfer it at a reduced price as well, so.
Yes, I think one of the, one of the important things just from a development perspective, and I'm probably stating, that's something that everybody understands, but, you know, the opportunity that exists today is really one of just really focusing on where you can do a catalyst-type development. And, and we all know our market to a pretty good degree and we know what the private development opportunities are and aren't there. And, and when that opportunity might exist, the important thing is to seize upon the opportunity that exists today and that can be done in the foreseeable future and, and then let that grow. The O'Brien property would be a really good, good example of that. Whether that's done from a public or private standpoint, the tax increment piece is critical. However, if you do that and it sits as an island and it doesn't attract private investment to follow around, then we've not really seized the opportunity. And in fact, now you could have a, you know, a negative consequence to future urban renewal projects. So that's, that's, I think, a very important point to make. And specific points in mind that, that think about today are, there's two great successes that we have in the core area. One, of course, is the South Block Apartment Project. And now all of a sudden, we have an opportunity where there's a market rate apartment housing project that has market rates. Now you can use that as a comp for other private development to follow in, in the downtown area. However, if you go into the wrong spot at the wrong time, that may not happen. So I think it's really critical to just make sure that you're not leapfrogging a little bit too much. The other, the other success, of course, is the McGillcrest block. And now all of a sudden, the challenge that we've always had, which has been, it's the lease rates. The commercial lease rates are down at the bottom in the core area where they should be at the highest point. And we're always challenged with that. Well, in that particular case where DAB invested $450,000 and an eight, eight and a half million dollar investment, now all of a sudden you have more market rates, again, that you can use for comps to encourage that, that you can lend upon for future developments. And so that's really critical. And again, going back to like the O'Brien site, even if that had a, a public function of some sort on it, then the opportunity around it exists for, for private development to follow. If there was a private development, for instance, in that spot, would, that, that had challenges, would that necessarily attract the private development? There's a lot of property in that area. And so I think that's something really critical to think about when you're talking about redevelopment in our sensitive district. But we, again, we have great successes that are right there at the doorstep that we've had. Now you can seize upon that opportunity.
I want to make sure I get other people, Counselor Lewis and then Counselor Bednar.
The, I've got to tell you, the situation with the Downtown Advisory Board is completely different than it was about six years ago when I was on. By the way, was there no money, but it was a huge leap. My only question, and I, I liked everything that I'm hearing, I, you know, in my opinion, I think, like a lot of people, Salem is very ripe, but you want to pick your, you want to pick your opportunities. And I, I have a lot of respect for the makeup of the Downtown Advisory Board. My only question is, if you sense that there's an opportunity that's, that's truly ripe, are you going to bring it to us or are you going to, are you going to wait for us to come asking, hey, is there anything there? Because you're, my sense is you're the expertise, you need to be in it to us. So that's what I'm hearing you offering, I want to make sure it's now a commitment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's really honestly what we came here to, here to hear, came here to hear. Is, because I know, obviously, you guys can look at our budget and say, okay, they've got 2.5 million earmarked for acquisition, let's go ahead and use it for this. And we were really hoping for you to say that in that you would like us to kind of do some groundwork and bring something to you guys as a, and, and, but also, the other, the other important piece is we want to make sure that when we do that, it's going to be something that you guys appreciate and want to see happen. So, the other piece of this meeting is to establish those priorities of, you know, whether it be multifamily housing, mixed-use property, something that's, you know, for the public interest to use, whatever it may be, kind of directing us in, okay, very, or even just location, which I know we've heard in north downtown a lot, which we kind of agree with. But that's really what we came here to find out from you guys is, you know, can we bring something to you? And if so, what priorities do you want it to meet?
Well, I'll, I'll just jump in, one thing that I, I really want to stress is that I would like to not see any more property going off the tax rolls. And we have it happening around us all the time just by virtue of being the state capital, largest school district and huge social service network and all that. But please, don't think of property downtown, as far as I'm concerned, for public, public use in terms of it's going to go off the tax rolls. We just can't afford it and we've got enough property that's off the tax rolls. We've got enough property that the city already owns, like here, and that, that should be prime property. Now, I think it's Warren Bednar's turn.
You actually had several things I wanted to talk about. First off, for anybody who's watching us on TV, I wanted to acknowledge that we are eating a meal this evening because the meeting was held before 6:00 PM. And we have counsel following this, which is likely to go rather late. So, this is one of the few things that we get as counselors in payment, we do not receive a wage.
Thank you for explaining why I have lettuce in my t-shirt.
I really wanted to speak to two different properties and I know we've touched on one already, but the, the other one that I'm, I'm looking at is the First Interstate Building downtown. And it's been big for a long time, I think it's been on the market for a period of time. And, and same that our mayor was just mentioning, I don't want to see anything acquired just to take it off the tax rolls so that we can do a development on it ourselves. What I would be looking for is that we acquire property to, to simulate or put together or also to help with our traffic patterns. So when I'm thinking about that property, just like the Les Newmans property, we got a hold of the Les Newman's property, we were able to facilitate at least a contract that says, hey, you, you know, where the old McMahon's property was, we were able to say, if you, if you get a development going there, the sooner you do, the less you're going to have to pay for the property. Well, so is there, is there any news on the Interstate, First Interstate Building? That was my first question, any at all that's happening on that corner? And, and much like the state hospital, I mean, isn't the land more viable if the building wasn't there? That's kind of my understanding.
I'm sorry, I checked out, just one quick moment.
My fault.
Oh, yeah, let's blame Counselor Anderson.
I didn't know what the Newman property was, so I was, now I don't.
So, with respect to 260 and 280 Liberty, which is how I define them, the Personner State Building and the building immediately adjacent to it, I, I do believe the folks who own that property, who have currently reactivated their demolition permit are, are in some analysis to determine how they can activate that property. Part of the ownership has been reticent to invest and so they're, I think they're trying to work through that. That's probably all I, I can say about that.
This is one of those places where I talk about, I don't want to take it off the tax rolls, but if the agency acquired it with the idea that it was going to put it back onto the tax rolls, that was my idea.
I don't know that, I don't know that the focus needs to be on property acquisition. It could be on, hey, let me give you 749,999 dollars in the form of a grant. And how, what priorities do we need to take into consideration from the agency in setting up the, the criteria for that grant? Does it look like an acquisition? Does it look like a partnership? Does it look like, hey, city, if you build this part, we'll build this part? I, I don't know what that looks like and that's part of why we're, we're here. I'm hearing, we don't want to take any property off the tax rolls. No, I, I agree.
Well, permanently off the tax rolls, if we, if we did it to, to put properties together to facilitate. together to facilitate and put it back to the public market.
Obviously, obviously brownfield development and greenfield development is going to yield more tax increment than property redevelopment. So there's a fine line there for what you want to see. That's just like the Delon property. I'm sure the tax assessed value of that property is through the roof because of all of the infrastructure that is there. If you buy that property and take all the infrastructure away, the tax assessed value goes down and then it'll go up again, but I don't know how much more tax increment that will create because I don't know what place it was when the property was put in.
That was actually the second site that I was referring to and just to saying it's an opportunity because vacant right now. We have traffic mitigation problems in that end of town. It just, boy, it just seems like it would be great to, to acquire it and then divide it differently so we, we don't have division street, right hand, right hand turns or angles, right angles to turn to get out of downtown.
There's also the property that is the parking garage is, I forget what it's called, but the one caty corner from the conference center. That's on the market as well. I mean, if you're talking, if you truly want to talk about properties that are available and on the market for sale, you know, that one hits my radar as well.
There really isn't much downtown. I mean, if you look, think about it, there's not like there used to be. The first interstate, you've got the parking garage, the historic parking garage at that. They can't get a demolition permit until they got an idea of where they're going to go with the, with the property once they demolish it. Anyway, my questions have been answered, thank you.
Well, one of the, one of the areas downtown that is not for sale, but we know in the future is going to be a senior possible mission. And maybe we should look at where they want to go and what they need to do, and maybe we should be helping them to get there so that that area could be maybe then amassed with the other businesses that are in there. And really look at that, which is a blight in terms of the, the structure itself. And also it's not a commercial retail activity that we would really like to have in our downtown area. So maybe something like that would be, you know, a project that somebody might look at.
Should we focus on properties or should we focus on concepts and goals and then let us go forward and vet the opportunities?
Let's talk about, let's talk about that. Councilor Nanki?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, because it depends on exactly where this side is if we're talking about the old, the garage. You don't have a lot of option based on the, the square footage of the parcel. It'd be nice to have something mixed used again to bring residential in on that one. You could get away with some kind of a commercial development. If you go north, you could do a combination. I'm not necessarily fussed for having them in the same building, but they have to complement each other. And, or if we go one direction, will it spur the other to happen near it? And a lot of times you build a residential up and they don't have any services near them and so that becomes the, the adjacent use or potential. So it'd be nice to see both or at least which one is going to do what to, to bring along some others as well.
Is it helpful to the DAB to have the council say to you, we have a vision for the riverfront of using, modifying those industrial buildings, warehouses, et cetera, and turning that into another type of retail, mixed use residential retail that would look different from downtown? But that would be sort of the area of that, I'm thinking of so many other cities where they've gone in and done that sort of thing. Councilor Dickey and then Councilor Anderson.
Thanks, Mayor. I really like that suggestion. That's something that I've been thinking about for a number of years. That, that north, just kind of north of the railroad bridge, is that what you're talking about? I think that's a great area to be looking at opportunities, whatever they look like. I mean, we've talked about a number of things and I just think that, you know, the idea of building it into, I, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to do some of that research, but I guess you call it like an esplanade kind of a thing. And then you can have different types of development along there. And I think Councilor Nanki, you had said there's, there's environmental money available. And I don't know if that's part of our brownfields money you're talking about, so that to me seems like a, would be a great place to at least look at what opportunities exist.
Bring something else to the table.
Councilor Anderson and then Councilor Bennett.
Thank you. The parking garage there is called the Marion Car Park for everybody here listening. And I guess I'll use that as a launch up to, you know, that used to be a historic hotel and that was torn down to build a parking lot, which is historic, you know, because it was there, I think it's in the history. And, and you know, the hotel was historic, but what followed wasn't. So in general, I'm for historic preservation, but I would not at all be upset if that building, you know, you have to show to tear it down, and I've had a lot of experience with this to tear it down, you have to show it's not viable as it is and you've got a better option basically. And I think that's, that corner could be a better option pretty easily. It could be shown that it's not viable as it is because it's not a parking garage. But as kind of a segue, I want to talk about the, I guess it's the first interstate bank building. To me, it's the Beluski building. I mean, that is a historic, yeah, that is a historic. I always thought it was Belushi, but I was told, yes, at a tour of downtown homes or downtown buildings designed by him, it's called Beluski. And so I understand there's problems with that building, but you know, there might be some way at least to incur, because one of the goals is to preserve the historic character of the downtown.
They have a demolition permit in place.
Yeah, I know they do.
Talks about the preservation of the release.
Yeah, yeah.
The reliculation.
But I don't know if it's the release or the actual structure, but you know, we've, we've lost a lot of Beluski buildings in town already and so it may not be possible, but I, I'd like that. Yeah. One more, one more thing. Sorry, excuse me, Mayor. I think mixed use is very important and I, I totally agree with what the mayor said about, and, and Councilor Dickey about what we can do north of the bridge there. And I look at the South Park building there and it shows that's, I guess the South Park, whatever the.
South Block.
South Block.
South Block, uh huh.
You know, that's a mixed use thing and that's a rating success and I think, you know, we might be able, and that is going to attract things. And I think if there was some way that could happen on the north end, that would be very, very exciting to me. One final comment, too, I mean, the, the river is a crucial asset here. So any way we can look at development along the river that would have some private and some public component would be very, very helpful. I'm looking at the DA White building there next to, on Front Street there. That, that, that looks like it could be used something. And the earlier map we had up there, there was like blue and green things on the north of the Union Street Bridge. And I thought it might be what the uses were, but it's actually the square footage. So I think there's a lot of things up there that might be able to use. So I, I really would urge, and I think all the counselors just talked about it, that we look at that area, we look to some sort of mixed use, we look at, at emphasis on the riverfront down there.
Absolutely, it's a treasure, absolute treasure. Councilor Bennett.
So for a moment, I just want to back away or rise up to the 30,000 foot view. That's clearly what I'm kind of hearing from the DAB here is that you're looking for some guidance or at least some, lets you get down into the weeds and figure things out. So I'm first off going to say that it's wonderful if you talked about areas that are north of the railroad bridge, but I am 110% for it's got to be market driven. It's got to make sense that the market won't go for it or it could be subsidized, yeah, but it still has to be market driven. At some point, there is a higher and better use for that land, but it's got to be from the market that, that does the redevelopment of the area. Having said that, incentives, you're talking about goals, that's all residential high, high-rise zoned land. In fact, it's one of the only areas, very, very little land in the city has residential high-rise zoning on it. Have you considered rezoning it perhaps to help? Or by maintaining the residential high-rise, it also means that we have a moderate amount of control as far as the city, city is concerned as to what ends up happening in that, in that location. So you're asking for, you're asking for some little high level things. That would be one, zoning, looking at zoning. True, two, it would be looking at traffic and I'm, all modes of traffic are important in downtown. The thing that I've been talking about for the last several years is that, that we've paid a lot of attention to pedestrian traffic. We don't allow bicycles on the, on the sidewalks downtown, but I want to keep our eyes on the vehicle traffic that's going through downtown. That's really, I mean, until you go clear up to 12th Street, you're going from south to north, I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of the choices other than going through downtown. And so I just want to keep eyes on if there's something that we can do to help move traffic through our downtown, that would be, be really, really nice. Three, just bring things to us as we come along, as you come along, as you see things and possibility. I know that the agency can, can come together literally within, within a week's notice and, and whatever you might have, we can move quickly at this end. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilor Lewis?
You got the first two cents, here's the second two cents. Two and a half million dollars is great, if you had a couple hundred million, I asked to borrow it for the bridge. What two and a half million dollars tells me is that whatever we do, we have to be sure that we're successful and we have to grow that money if we want to keep doing things. So the success of the investment has to be the priority now.
Councilor, Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. One of the, I, I'm really interested in that area also north of the, of the railroad bridge. The, the thing I keep thinking of is, is, is understanding what the barriers are there. It's really helpful to have DAB explain to us at times what that railroad track down Front Street means to redevelopment or development in that area. I mean, certainly there have been properties down and they're available, but there appears to be no buys. I'd like to understand that. I think it's helpful to have the, the DAB explain that to us because if we have some sort of serious barrier, it's just good to know and then we don't bother you with, with the issue if it is a, a serious enough problem to kind of keep it for a much later date when we have a lot more money and a lot different kind of plan. I think the thing with the two and a half million is trying to figure out in the next, I don't know how many, let's say two budget cycles or one budget cycle, whatever it takes. And I don't know how, what, what are your top, what do you have that's absolutely the best, most likely thing we can do? I think that would help us to keep moving. Sometimes you sit, we can sit too long and, and lose track of our focus on this thing. And I think that that's really helpful to have that. I, I continue to think of that Les Newman property and that that, we moved as rapidly as we could on that to put that property together and can do it pretty rapidly, but it's, it's getting stuff together that can happen, I think is, and you all have the judgment for that, that can at least inform our decision making. That to me is real important and not let us, not let us go down rabbit holes. Be really cautious with us on that. If you take us down, the rabbit holes will go. And.
Never fight our way out.
Or we'll chase the chicken, we'll chase the chickens with you for a couple of years, you know, it's that kind of problem.
Start designing stuff.
Yeah, and we don't design well. I think it's, it's really coming to us with what you, what your best thinking as, as really informed citizens in this area look like. That really helps us.
You know, when I think about, excuse me, Councilor McCoy, I'll be with you in one second. When I think about downtown from a 30,000 foot level or even a 3,000 foot level, I think about the downtown, what is it for? And in large part it's for people coming into, to do commerce and going out from. Now we have a larger residential component, so that's really helpful downtown. But what is it that might keep people from coming downtown is another issue. And this isn't necessarily what DAB is supposed to be worrying and thinking about, but I hear it all the time, a detriment to coming downtown to shop is the atmosphere created by the number of homeless that are in our downtown area. And people tell me over and over, I'm going to shop at Lancaster, I'm going to shop at the Woodburn Outlet Mall, I'm going to go to Portland, I'm going to go to Bridgeport Village. And, you know, I think we can just spend a lot of money on things downtown, but if we don't create an atmosphere that people want to come to, it's not going to matter how pretty the buildings are. And I'm wondering if there's something that we can think about, and I do talk about the Union Gospel Mission. And maybe, maybe it would be a good idea to work with them to relocate their mission and their ministry, not to an area where they're isolated from all the services people need, because that's why they say they're all downtown. But there's got to be some way to create a, a more pleasant atmosphere in the downtown area that will spur more shoppers, more businesses and more investment. And at the same time, do something really creative that will help move the capital campaign for the Union Gospel Mission along. And my, my disclosure is that I worked on the first phase of their campaign and they've kind of put it aside, but they're going to bring it back again. So maybe that's something we should be thinking about. Councilor Bennett?
One other, I'll just, because we were talking about some specific things, I want to mention that we had as a council goal for several years and I'm still real interested in, that I've thought has been missing, is some sort of connection or gateway between downtown and Riverfront Park. That right now, we're really kind of, we have, we have created a great park, we've got a lot of activity going on downtown. I, I went walking with a group of people a couple of Friday nights ago to kind of show them around and realized just how difficult it can be to move between the two and that you really can't always recognize that between that, you know, that downtown actually should blend more completely into that Riverfront Park and we're missing that. I've always thought of it on State Street with some sort of streetscape and, and some sort of attractive pull into that park. And like I said, that stayed on the council goal, I viewed that as, as something we really ought to be taking a look at if we really want to connect that Riverfront Park to downtown.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge Councilor McCoy because I passed him over, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm used to it.
No.
I knew that was coming to you.
You know, I've been quiet and I'm sure the other counselors are wondering what the heck's wrong with me here, but it sounds like we're spitballing here. And I'm sitting there and I can do that with the best of them, but I don't know that I have enough understanding of what's actually going on here. Is this 200 and a half million for this year? Is this two and a half million for the next three years? Are we going to get another two and a half million next year's budget? You know, I guess I'm, you're asking us to, I think, answer a question. I don't know that I have enough detail or grasp of understanding to really give you the feedback you're looking for. So I'm a little bit like Jim in that you guys, you're the experts. If you've got suggestions that you want to come and present them to us and justify them and tell them, tell us why so we can listen and give you our opinion that way. That's, that's really what I think needs to be done. You're not going to get any, you know, anything out of me that's going to be, okay, that's where we're going or headed. But there are, I think, more information I would like as to how, how this is going to accrue and where the money goes and how long it's for and is there more coming and, and those kinds of deals. Because it seems like instead of these one offs, it ought to be looking out five years and what's the funding going to be and what's step one, step two, step three, rather than, okay, we got two and a half million, what do we do with it? So.
Just a moment. Yes, Jennifer?
Thanks, sorry. So I appreciate that. I think what we were looking for as a group was the approval to do that. So I, this has been super helpful for all of us, I take, looking at the clock and it's 6:21. So to speak to Councilor Bennett, we actually talked about streetscape, which is another one of our budget line items that we get to play with. And we actually talked about the, the PED lighting and the streetscape components of State Street to speak to that park connection. It's $700,000, $750,000.
This year?
Dollars to improve one half of a block face.
Six hundred.
Oh, 600,000 for one half of a block face. And we only have 300 in our streetscape. So it, it's really expensive to do what you're talking about. So I appreciate that that's a priority because that helps us drive what we're looking for.
Well, it's an interest, it got, it moved down from priority to interest.
Well, it's, and, and this two, this 2.5 in opportunity funds, you know, we've talked about property acquisition with it, but there's, there's nothing that doesn't say that we as a group can't go back and, and number crunch and say, gosh, agency, we really think, you know, now that we're looking at it and we have your license to look at it more closely, that we don't want to move money around to try to incentivize another goal or leverage in a different way.
Okay. Councilor Nanki and then Councilor Bennett.
In regards to connecting the park with downtown, I was in San Diego a couple of weeks ago and they have the Gaslamp District. But the thing that draws you to it, rather than, I mean, the, the streetscape in and of itself is nice, but you can make some relatively modest improvements to draw people with like their signage on the lamppost and actually show a route that could probably be done. their signage on the lamppost, and actually show a route that could probably be done very inexpensive, and river something, and people would know that connects to the river, or River Park.
Counselor Ben Arz?
I was hoping to have Shari Walgren come back up to the podium, I had some questions in reference to the URA itself, the district.
Okay, sure.
As while she's getting up. So I just wanted to know things like the total indebtedness of the URA, and in 2018 we retired the, is it Conference Center debt, is that all the debt on that building at that point? And basically, we're talking about two and a half million dollars a year going to that debt?
I have, the maximum indebtedness for the, I'm looking for my page that speaks of that, for the URA is 315 million is the maximum indebtedness, and we're, and we have available 223 million.
So we still have a long ways to go before we reach that ceiling. And how much do we get per year then?
Pardon?
How much tax increment do we get per year?
That I don't know, I'd have to bring that back to you.
Okay. And the, well, that also just takes, the amount of money that we get per year will also dictate the size of any bond, if we wanted to go for a bond for any other improvements.
We anticipate to have, with the retirement of the Convention Center debt, the ability to bond 20 to 30 million in 2018.
Okay.
That's, that's the big, that's the big nut.
That's the big nut, right. So I, Counselor, or, it's not Counselor at this point, it's Commissioner. Anyway, Counselor McCoy's question, does this help answer your issues to understand a little bit more about the finance, what's there and what's available?
To a degree, yeah.
I mean, until we reach the total indebtedness, we can continue to keep the URA open and continue to do the work to remove life. Once we've reached that limit, we can't do it no matter what, I think at that point, the URA has to close, and if you want another one, you have to start all over again.
Other comments or questions? We've got about three minutes before we run like rabbits to the completely other end of the civic campus here. All right, well, thank you, thank you everybody. Do you have your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry, Christian?
If no one else was going to make comment, I just wanted to say that we really appreciate this meeting, because quite frankly, in general, you told us exactly what we wanted to hear.
Oh, good.
Because we've been kind of tiptoeing around, picking something out, because we really didn't know the agency board's take on whether, if we said, okay, here's a project that we want you guys to do, if you guys would appreciate that, or if you guys would prefer that we left it to you to find something. So we really, really appreciate this meeting, and it's, on our end, it's been very productive.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. It's encouraging to us to know how much you care about the downtown area, and that you're willing to continue rolling up your sleeves and looking at the opportunities, because I feel like you're closer to people who can be partnering with all of us to make things happen, closer than we counselors probably are, and anything you can do out there to spur that interest and bring people together and have discussions, I think is great, absolutely. Great, okay. Thank you, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, off we go.
Recorder, please call the roll call.
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Counselor Ben Arz?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Nanki, would you please present a motion for approval of additions or deletions for this evening's meeting?
I would be honored, Madam Mayor, I would move additions, deletions for the September 28th meeting, as contained in the two yellow-covered packets on your desktops this evening.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, and seconded by Counselor Ben Arz, to move the additions, deletions, and revisions into the agenda. Is there discussion, Counselor Nanki?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We received additional written testimony on the revisions to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 86 on trees on city-owned property, and we also received a supplemental report to clarify the cultural and tourism promotion advisory board selection process, and requirements for making recommendations on TOT funding for non-501(c)(3) organizations, and thank you very much to staff for putting that out. It answered all the questions I had as well, and I think if the public looks at it, we'll have a much better understanding as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The question on the floor, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. It's now time for council and city manager comment. Council comment, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I have two comments, and the first one is on a more somber note. As you know, in past council meetings, I've discussed the fact that we have already had six pedestrian deaths in Salem, and that's way too many, and hopefully we'll have a report coming up sometime soon about what we can potentially do. But I also just want to note, there's been a seventh death, and it's a gentleman named James Alton, 68-year-old man, not in Salem, in Kaiser, but it was at Chamawa Road and Newburgh Road where he was crossing the street. It does not look, from what I can see, that he, he might not have been at a crosswalk, but he was crossing the street at 7:30 in the morning, and was hit and killed. And this, back to the, you know, I talked about the traffic, the speed limits, and how's that going to affect, and the speed limit on that road is 30 miles an hour, and when the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, and it looks like the driver, you know, was driving with, you know, at the speed limit, the odds of somebody getting killed are 40 to 50 percent, and they reduce drastically, if it's 20, it's 5 to 10 percent. So that's, even though it's not Salem, I think that's another impetus for us to look quite closely at how we protect pedestrians, and by extension bicycle riders, where they're supposed to be. Then on a nicer note, I went to the League of Oregon Cities with the mayor and President Nanki, and McCoy, yes, this guy down here.
It's not only me.
Yeah. We're continuing a trend of not recognizing Counselor McCoy, as we did in the work session. And it was very helpful to me, a lot of it was geared towards smaller cities and rural cities, and a lot of the programs were that, and I was like, I don't need to go to that, because we already have a Salem Housing Authority, we already have utilities and, not utilities, but water, and all this sort of stuff. But some of them were very interesting, mostly on affordable housing and dealing with the homelessness issue, and I went to three different seminars there, breakout sessions, including a tour of affordable housing in Bend. The other thing I want to report is, my esteemed colleague here on my left was installed as president of the League of Oregon Cities, where he will be for the next year, so congratulations, President.
Congratulations, Brad.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Ben Arz?
I had the opportunity last week to take actually a mayor's position on the grand reopening of the Home Program. Home Program is a resource center for homeless youth, and it's located right off the corner of Union and Church, and it's a place for kids who are either homeless, or on the verge of being homeless, or have issues with family members and don't know where to go, there's resources there for them, and it was a, it's run by, I think it's Community Action Agency and others, there was a grant that came from the city out of our, out of our general budget, there was money from Rotary, there was money from other locations that went into refurbishing the inside of the home, and making it a better place for those youth, a safe place for the youth.
Great, and thanks for going, appreciate that. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to let everyone know that next year at this time, the League of Oregon Cities Conference will actually be in Salem, so I would hope that everyone would be able to attend, and we'll be working with partner cities to set up tours. It'd really, really, really be nice to have that bridge accessible to a large number of folks coming in from all over the state, so I'll keep pushing that one all year long. Maybe we can just go out and stand and watch, make sure they're working efficiently. And then secondly, for those watching at home, if you have time really quick, I know the CIR sent out an email today as well, the Firefighters Foundation is actually filming a wedding in regards to if someone weren't there, life situation, so you can be an extra on TV, but I can't remember where the heck people are supposed to go, because I knew I would be here.
I think it's St. Paul's Episcopal Church on South Liberty.
I figured at least, you know, if you don't want to watch, just go down and be an extra in a movie.
There you go.
I'm going to stamp you down.
Okay. Other comments? All right. City manager comment?
I'll just give some kudos to, once again, to Public Works and their contractors for executing a great project on River Road South. We were able to open that up a few hours earlier than anticipated, and the project went smoothly, and made a good improvement there as far as some landslide mitigation. We're not complete with the work that needs to be done there, more analysis will be needed in the future, but it's a huge improvement, and hopefully keep folks that travel that road safe as they travel to and from home.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We now move to public comment, do we have anyone signed up? Okay, we have Brian Hines, Mr. Hines, there you are.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, yes, Brian Hines, 10371 Lake Drive, Southeast Salem. I'm just speaking here because I want to celebrate your second reading of the early sales of recreational marijuana ordinance, as speaking of someone that did their part back in my college days in the 60s, to just say yes to marijuana, and so I feel vindicated and happy for so many people whose lives have been hurt over the years by the war on drugs and the demon weed craziness. I looked today on the Oregon Health Authority's website, we've got 12 medical marijuana dispensaries in Salem that are set to sell early sales on October 1st, on Thursday, which is great, four aren't for some reason. And just to reiterate the benefits for everybody in this room, for everybody, and this was talked about at your first hearing, that what you're going to do is going to reduce the black market sales of marijuana between now and when licensed recreational stores open in the end of 2016. We're going to bring new jobs to Salem, that was spoken to by one of the cannabis industry people, you know, maybe two or three in each store, so that's 30 to 40 new jobs in Salem. We're going to generate tax revenue after the tax-free period of sales ends in January. And as we heard at the first reading, we're going to offer a way for people with medical needs to get marijuana without going through the several hundred dollar cost, and the months of waiting for a medical marijuana card. So that brings up the issue that somebody talked about, I think it was Margot, a person in the industry, said this whole idea of that there's medical marijuana, and there's recreational marijuana is kind of crazy, it's kind of like saying, there's alcohol, there's people that drink alcohol, I don't know, for their heart, and for fun, and then there's people that just go wild and crazy. And actually, maybe we can start a city council or City of Salem book club if we do on marijuana. Steve D'Angelo's The Cannabis Manifesto, I've just started reading, and he's a pioneer in marijuana, medical marijuana in California, and he argues, as somebody did at the previous meeting, that we should just speak of adult use of marijuana, because that encompasses both the medical use and the recreational use, but really, we're not, we're not on the edge of death, and we're not in perfect health, all of us are in between, and he argues persuasively that marijuana is a wellness-promoting herb, cannabis, it makes you happy, it makes you feel better, what's wrong with that, even though in our holdovers from the Puritan ethic, we worry about feeling good, and marijuana does make you feel good, but also has so many health-promoting effects, that there's a good argument, just we're taking it as a preventative, Alzheimer's, anti-inflammatory, arthritis, so it's actually good for all kinds of things, even if you're using it recreationally, which is not really the case with alcohol, which maybe only has a few minor health benefits, marijuana has plenty. So let's just all, I don't know, what do we do, raise our toque, raise our vaporizer, and say thank you to the city council, and everybody that made this happen, because a lot of people worked on it for decades. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Well, now move on to the consent calendar, Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would move the consent calendar with no pulls, or did you want to pull the one for question, okay, and no vote registered on 3.3D by Counselor Nanki.
Second.
3.3D, did you say?
Yes, collective bargaining with the assistant city attorneys.
Okay. All right, it's been moved by Counselor Nanki, and seconded by Counselor Ben Arz, to adopt the consent calendar as presented with the notation that Counselor Nanki is voting no on item 3.2, excuse me, 3.3D. Is there discussion? Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Madam Mayor, I always appreciate it when President Nanki lists what the consent calendar is, and maybe he could go through that, too. Thank you.
On tonight's consent calendar, we have two resolutions, excuse me, one resolution regarding the City Council Policy C2 regarding debt management, and that's the one I was referring to Counselor Lewis on. Essentially, we have contradictory numbers on what the state allows us to have as debt, which is 3% of property values. Council has set their own value at 1 and 1/2 percent, and then there was a time when that 1 and 1/2 percent actually equaled $2.42 per thousand, and so we're removing that $2.42 per thousand, because the 1.5 percent is still half of what the state allows, and the number moves, so we're getting rid of the hard number and staying with the flexible number that will change over the years. On action items, we have an exception to a nonprofit requirement in Council Policy Number C1 for grants less than $2,000, and that's what I spoke to on the additions agenda, where we got more information on that, which will allow cultural activities that are run by not nonprofit organizations, or very loose operations, they're not for profit type, but it's folks that may not be, have a large enough organization to actually be able to maneuver into a nonprofit status, so for small events, they would follow the same criteria as the other nonprofit organizations do, but it will allow some of those activities to take place, and then they would be reviewed on the front end and evaluated on the back end, they could do it for up to five years, and then any organization after five years is not eligible, as I read it. We have a memorandum of understanding with the American Red Cross in regards to a working relationship in the event of emergencies, which is a great thing. Another wonderful thing is the AED units, Automatic External Defibrillators, for all the police cars that came up through the budget season, thanks to Counselor Bennett on the wish list, and the Emergency Services Fund had been tasked with that. The firefighters went out, raised a whole ton of money, the foundation, so we'll actually be able to not only put 64 police cars, but actually move more AEDs around town to increase response time, and hopefully save some lives. We have the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Salem City Attorney's Collective Bargaining Unit, leases in the Schmeckert Parkade for the Harvey Level Hair Care Center, as well as McGrath Public Fish House, and then a subordination of a community development block grant on, for the Center for Hope and Safety. They're looking at expanding size of a facility, which is also a great thing, they've actually doubled the amount of people they've been able to help downtown as well, so, all in all, really nice agenda tonight, with some good things happening out there.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate the rundown on that. The question on the floor, all those in favor of the consent calendar with the understanding that Brad Nanki is voting no on item 3.3D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. It's now time for public hearing. It's now time for public hearings. Let's see which one. We're starting with 4A. Would the recorder please introduce the hearing?
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to review Planning Commission's decision on a consolidated application for zone change, Class III design review, Class III site plan review, Class II zoning adjustment, and Class II driveway approach permit for property located in the 1600 to 1700 blocks of Walm Drive Southeast. This is a continued hearing, and public comment portion of the hearing has been closed, and no further testimony will be permitted.
Thank you very much. Councilor McCoy, do you have a motion?
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor McCoy and seconded by Councilor Benars. Is there any discussion? Councilor Anderson?
I'm going to be voting against this motion in the same way that I voted against it the last time, on a philosophical difference of changing the zoning from RM1 to RM2, and I expressed that at the last meeting, so I'm going to be consistent with that and vote against it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other comment? Other discussion? All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries with Councilor Anderson voting no. We have a second public hearing. Would the recorder please introduce item 4B?
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Thank you. We have Rena Peck with us this evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Rena Peck. I'm Urban Development, Federal Programs Manager for Urban Development. Before you tonight is the 2014-2015 Consolidated Annual Performance Report. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that council adopt and review this report for the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership The Consolidated Annual Performance Report identifies the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership projects and programs that were intended to meet the needs of individuals and families at 80% or below median family income. These needs are met by addressing homelessness. They are also addressed by economic community development and neighborhood revitalization. The 2014-2015 total CDBG and home funds that were expended were approximately $5.8 million. This report, oh, there it goes. Yes, this report includes feedback to HUD regarding the city's meeting the goals outlined in the 2009-2014 Consolidated Plan. Goal number two, as you can see, the actual, under the actual accomplishments, 51 businesses served and 23 jobs created. The proposed was 34 jobs created, and the reason there, it appears we didn't meet our accomplishment, is because those positions are still being filled. So that was a project for Garten. We extended their recycling services, and out of that, they were going to create 34 jobs for people who have disabilities. You will note again, in some of these cases here, under affordable housing, it appears that we did not meet our goal. However, that number is due to projects that were opened and carried over into the current '15 year, because they didn't get the units leased up. So we actually have met our goal, but because it wasn't until the 2015 year, we weren't able to report that. Revitalization, goal number four, we didn't receive any applications for that goal in 2014, therefore, we had nothing to report. However, in 2015, we are providing grant money to the Grant Neighborhood Park, so we will be doing some revitalization to that park this year. So here we talk about some of the programs and projects, or the programs that actually serve people who are low-income. Interim Housing Assistance served 82 people. This is an emergency rental assistance program, so people come to nonprofits and say, hey, I can't pay my rent this month. It's just a one-time monthly opportunity for them. Public services ranges with case management and some various things like that. Affordable Housing Units, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance and Security, again, that's a monthly payments that people get to help with their rent. The Tenant-Based Rental Assistance is actually up to two years. People can get rental assistance, and those individuals, some of them are coming out of homelessness. Some are people who are living with AIDS or HIV. So it's really helping a large part of our population. Microenterprise training is, also provides opportunities for people who maybe are low-income, coming out of rehab or something like that, to help them start their own businesses. And then jobs created, again, that was with Garten. So prior to tonight's hearing, we are required to provide a 15-day comment period for people to comment on the actual accomplishments. We also provided lots of public outreach to individuals to come in and let us know what they thought about our accomplishments. To date, we have received no comments, but if we received any after tonight's meeting, we certainly would let you know those comments and what the responses were. So I'd like to just take last opportunity to thank the community partners that help us meet our goals and help the people in the community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Did we have anyone signed up for this evening's public hearing?
No.
No, no one signed up. All right. Then I'll go to questions of staff. I see two hands, Councilor Nanki and then Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Rena. Excellent report.
You're welcome.
The microenterprise training, out of 51, do you know what some of those types of businesses actually were?
Yeah, they have a really good rate of return. So Merit, which they work with, the Shemekah, small business, what is it, small business, whatever that is on High Street, I can't think of it. Anyway, and so they have, let's see, last year, they had about 25 businesses that stayed open. So for instance, one of the examples is the crepe business that's down under the Pringle Parkade area. So that was a Merit business. Island Girls, I think, is the name of another business that they helped with. So they have a really good success rate. Their program, it's a six-weeks program, and then they also provide some additional services after that. Another organization is Interface, and they have provided, there's a business called The Piñata Company, I think, it's on Lancaster, and that's one of their biggest accomplishments. And then, is it Don Pedro's, which is on High Street, I think, as well, is another one. So, yeah, they have, we're seeing a lot of these businesses that are expanding, that are starting out as microbusinesses. It's really rather exciting.
I love small business. That's where most of our employment comes from, so.
Yes.
Keep it up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
Thank you as well for this excellent report. You and I talked a little bit today, and I told you I'd have a few questions. My first one is, of the 23 jobs through Garten, it says it focused on hiring persons with disabilities. Do you know how many of that 23 did have disabilities, and what were their disabilities? I mean, physical or mental or...
Most of them are, most of them are mental disabilities. So the 23 jobs are actually people, new people that they were able to hire with disabilities.
Terrific. Thank you. Then I have a question on your attachment on page three, table one, which is the accomplishment. You're to be commended, you and the agency, for, looks like you exceeded almost all your goals, but there were two areas, and expand affordable housing and promote economic development, where you were at 71% and at 68%, and everything else you were above or well above 100%. Could you speak to that, please?
Yes. So the affordable housing, it goes back to lease-up. So we were able to rehab or construct some new housing, but the units weren't able to get leased up in time.
So that's what you were talking about earlier in your report?
Yes. And then the same would be with economic development.
All right. Then I see a table on page 11, and I'm wondering, excuse me, page, yeah, page 11, table 11 and table 12. Do those relate to table one somehow?
Yes, they do. So the items that you see in table 11 and table 12, those are actually part of our Tenant-Based Rental Assistance and Security deposit. So these are actually families that receive like rental assistance versus actually a unit.
Okay.
Those programs are like Section 8, kind of.
And again, commendations for your goal, you exceeded your goal in every one of those.
Thank you.
And finally, Madam Mayor, if I may, one more question. On page 13 of your report, you talked about, this is one of the largest acronyms I've ever seen, MWVCAA.
It's Midwellamet Valley Community Action Agency.
Yeah, that was my question. You really say the acronym.
Sorry.
But you did a homeless count, and you don't tell us the total. I'm wondering if, you know, on January 28, 2015, what was the actual count that was resulted from that?
So they haven't released the 2015 numbers yet, but in the 2014 count, there was 1,815 individuals that they counted, and it's a one-time count.
Sure, sure.
So that doesn't necessarily mean that we were able to count everyone, so that never could be...
I suspect you weren't. I suspect there are people who don't want to be counted.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Peck? All right. Thank you very much. I will close the hearing. And Councilor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would move staff recommendation, which is essentially approving submittal of the 2014-15 Program Year Report.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Benars. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And our third public hearing has to do with amendments to the Salem Revised Code, Chapter 86, Trees on City-Owned Property. Would the city recorder please introduce the public hearing?
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 86, Trees on City-owned Property.
Thank you. And we have a staff report. I see Patricia Farrell here.
I'm sorry, I have a hard time reading this.
That's okay.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. Patricia Farrell with Salem Public Works Department. I'd like to just give a brief overview of the proposed changes to SRC, Chapter 86, Trees on City-owned Property. So in May 2013, City Council asked Public Works to look at the code and propose some revisions based on, following on some controversial tree removals downtown. And the purpose of this was to provide some clear criteria for tree removals, to provide a clear process for permit applications, decision-making, and appeals, and to make the code consistent, clear, and concise. So one of the first things that we did was to form a citizens advisory committee, and these are the members that were participated in that group, and we went through the whole code and came up with several revisions, which you have seen before you on your staff report. So again, the overview is to clarify when permits are needed, to provide some criteria for tree removal, to provide a process for notifications, appeals, and variances, to clarify who has standing to appeal. And then also, the group proposed the creation of an urban tree commission with decision-making authority on appeals. And then some of the information that was in the existing code related to very specific information was better suited to administrative rules. So that was removed from the code and moved to a new administrative rule. So the summary of the tree removal criteria, the tree is dead, the tree is in a state of decline such that it is, will die soon or will become a risk, it's structurally unsound such that, again, that it might become a risk, it's either infected with a disease or infested with insects such that it might spread to other trees, the trees might be planted too close together, and they're having an adverse effect on each other, pruning has destroyed the natural shape of the tree and then caused the tree to go into decline, the removal is required for construction and there's no alternative to the removal, or the tree is adversely affecting infrastructure, and again, there's no alternative but removal. So one of the main policy issues that has been discussed and where we received a lot of public comments was the proposed urban tree commission. So this would replace the existing shade tree advisory committee, and it would increase the members from six to seven. It's also proposed that there be a certain composition of the group that's laid out there of the several members, and the group, the UTC, would be given authority to make final decisions on tree removal appeals and variance appeals. So when we went out to the public, for public comment, we actually took four different options to the public and discussed these with each of the groups. So one of them was no change, just keep the shade tree advisory committee as it is. The second one was that all decisions are made administratively. The third was, as discussed, the proposed urban tree commission. And the fourth option was that the proposed role of the urban tree commission be incorporated into an existing committee, such as the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So we received a lot of comments, and some of these we actually incorporated into the code that is in front of you now. One of them is that written notice, we received lots of comments that the proposed minimum 15 days for review was too short, so we've increased that to 30 days for review. So there would be a written notice provided to the neighborhood association where the trees are located, and this would announce that they have opportunity to comment or to appeal. There would also be a physical posting of the notice near the tree to be removed, and that would be up for, again, another 30-day comment period or opportunity for appeal. And then the who could appeal is also clarified, and it could be the applicant, the neighborhood association, or any interested party who filed a notice of intent to appeal. So this just kind of outlines the process. So for instance, if someone submits an application and it's reviewed according to the criteria that I've shown you, if the permit is approved for removal, the tree can be removed, there would be a 30-day notification to the neighborhood association and onsite posting. If there's no appeal, the permit's issued. If there's an appeal, the appeal goes to the urban tree commission at a public meeting, and they make the final decision, and that decision is final. If the permit for tree removal is denied, the applicant has a 30-day window to decide if they want to appeal that decision. If they decide to appeal, again, it would go to this notification process, and people who are interested in commenting on that could go to the urban tree commission at a public meeting and give their comments there, and again, the decision would be made by the urban tree commission, and that decision would be final. So we began public outreach in June, and we gave presentations to five neighborhood associations and six community groups, and public comments were received from 12 of those groups or individuals, and the majority of those are in your packet. We did receive a couple of late ones, late Friday or today, so I believe you also have those. The majority of them were in support of an urban tree commission or another citizen-based panel with decision-making authority. There was also the recommendation, as I mentioned, to extend the notification period from 15 to 30 days, which we have done in the code before you. There was a recommendation that the variance appeal should follow the same process as the other types of appeals, and so we did that. We thought that was a good idea, too. We had it a little bit more complicated in the original version. And then there were several recommendations on changes to the proposed composition of the urban tree commission, which we have not changed at this point, but is certainly open for discussion. And that's the end of my public presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We have several people who signed up to testify, so we will have them testify, and then we will go back to questions from staff. So we'll start with Casia Quilinen and then David Engrin. Did I say his name wrong? I'm sorry. What is it?
Engen. Engen.
Oh, of course.
Just because, just because his handwriting's hard to read, there's no, no.
It's okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Casia Quilinen. I wear four or five different hats, I think, at this public hearing. As you all know, I've been seriously involved with this issue since 2013. So what I'd like to say is, I'd like to really urge you to adopt the staff recommendation this evening. It's thorough, it's complete, and it addresses most of the issues that we were concerned about. I do have a few comments. I do have a few comments primarily addressing the issues which are, remain to be resolved, which is the composition of the urban tree commission. For various reasons, and you've seen this in the comments from the letters that you've received, we believe that nine members of this urban tree commission would be better. For one thing, if, and let us say, oh, Allah, that this doesn't happen, if you decide that you want to incorporate it into the Parks and Rec Board, of which I am the current chairperson, it would be easier for us to have the whole board become the tree commission rather than trying to find seven people out of that whole board. It would just make an easier number to transition, much like you don't have five of council members just be the urban development commission, you have all of you be the urban development commission. Another issue simply is, we felt that more expertise would be necessary on the urban tree commission. So three members instead of one with some expertise in forestry, arboriculture, horticulture, something related. One is just not enough when you've got a board of seven or a board of nine. So we really need more people that know something about trees. You can't rely, if it goes to the Parks Department, the Parks knows something about trees, but that's not our main focus. Our main focus is ground scape and invasive plants and waterways and bridges and things like that. It's not the specific individual trees. So we thought we want more expertise, and we, two members of the Park Board find, and then finally, we thought that it would probably be not, you don't really need to have dedicated positions for the downtown business, the historic area and so forth. If you do that, if you make these dedicated positions, you will limit the field of people who can apply or who would apply, and you might, you will restrict, by having dedicated positions, you restrict it to just those areas. So we were saying, okay, let's have four at-large positions. If you have nine, that's four. If you have seven, that's two, at-large positions, which could very well include the downtown or the historic district if people wanted to apply from that. But the idea was to widen it as far as possible so that you get a good representation on this urban tree commission. And if the problem really is that our commissions are not being fulfilled, then that's probably a result that the criteria for fulfilling them are too narrow. So that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Quillanen? Okay, I see Counselor Lewis and then Counselor, was it Nanki?
Bennett, Anderson, and Nanki.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, take it away, Casia. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I have just one question. In the current code, eighty-six point one-six-five, it talks about an appeal process that is twenty-J. Basically, the final step is to a hearings officer. In the staff report, it stops at the committee, commission, the Parks advisory, whatever.
Yep.
It stops at that body. Why wouldn't you want to have that final step to a hearings officer?
Oh, that's a, first of all, hearings officers are expensive. That's step one. There'd be, there's a filing fee that's associated with the hearings officer. Second of all, and I think your city attorney can clarify this for you, depending on the type of hearing that you have, if you have a type of hearing that we're talking about here, which is essentially an on-the-marriage type of hearing, then the only appeal that would be allowed to a hearings officer would be on the process, as in, was there adequate notice given? Were the people allowed to participate and with due process and all of that sort of stuff? So, you know, why complicate the issue further? So that was one of the options, as you saw, to go directly, basically directly, to a hearings officer, but that in and of itself does not allow for the kind of public transparency and public participation, which we think will bring more trust and confidence in the city's decisions on tree issues.
All right. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Casia. The current membership requirements for Parks and Rec Board, are there any?
Oh, yes, I'm sure there are.
Because it just jumped in, and I don't have a clue what it is, and so let me ask staff if there's any.
That would be helpful if you did.
At all? If the choice is to try to move that way.
I actually have that, I can tell you. Do you want me to read that to you right now? One member shall be chosen to represent Salem School District. Members shall be chosen from among such persons concerned with and interested in the development of public parks and playgrounds and like public places in the city. Members shall be residents of or have their places of business in the city of Salem. That's as general as it is.
Right. That's right. It's as general as it is, and one of the recommendations that various groups have made about the composition is that if you get rid of these, quote, these dedicated positions that you can see in eighty-six point oh-two-oh, then you can have a more, a more general, as in the Parks Board, a more general set of criteria. And there was something else I was going to say about that, but I've forgotten now.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Anderson?
Counselor Nanki and I were thinking along the same lines, because I wanted that, but just a little follow-up. If you know, are there any current members of the Parks Advisory Committee that actually have?
Expertise in forestry.
Professionals meeting the standards, a member with expertise in urban forestry or anything. There are not?
No. We have people with expertise in sports and ballfields and disc golf and, you name it, but not specifically in forestry, arboriculture, or any of those other things, which is why we're strongly recommending that when you do this urban tree commission or whatever you do with it, that you make sure that you have lots of people with that kind of specific expertise, because they're going to have to be looking at this technical tree manual, which, you know, Patricia went through a few of the highlights, you know, diseases, infestations of things, I mean, trees that are at the point of dying. I mean, it's relatively complicated.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, Casia, I always want to publicly thank you very much for the work you've done on this. I know how much you've worked on this particular change, and it was extremely helpful, and I think we're all indebted to you for taking the time you've taken on this one and your expertise.
Thank you.
Second, what is the makeup of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee in terms of its members' expertise? Is there a membership qualification there?
I think there is. I think, I know there are two members of the Sprab Board, I'm one of them, and Rick Retzman is the other, and I'm not sure what the actual qualifications of the other shade tree members are.
Actually, Counselor Bennett, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is advisory to the Director of Public Works. It's not one that our boards and commissions fills.
Ah, okay.
So maybe Peter Fernandez could tell us?
Yeah, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. It's, and that is correct, Mayor, and it is a subset of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, so I do not believe that there are any requirements that I'm aware of for being a member of the advisory committee.
Okay. And do I understand correctly, Casia, that the concept here is that the urban tree commission replaces the shade tree advisory?
Correct, in its entirety.
In its entirety, and, okay, in its role completely, in terms of
Correct.
Choice of trees or any of that kind of
That's right.
Activity around public trees.
That's right. Anything having to do with trees would come to this urban tree commission, anything.
Anything. And there would be no more shade tree advisory committee?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I have a question.
Oh, sure.
First, I'd like to say thank you, Casia, for meeting with me, when I had the idea about the Salem Parks and Recreation Board being the final decision-maker, and we, I really appreciated the way you helped me kind of walk through that and think of ways to make my recommendation more clear. And it seemed to me, when we were hearing testimony earlier, several months ago, I think, about this whole issue, that the thing that people were most concerned about was that there be a citizen participation in the decision-making rather than staff or a hearings officer. Is that kind of the read that you've been getting from people you've talked to?
Oh, yes. I think that it's important that you do have a public process here somewhere and that it be as transparent as possible. Otherwise, you'll get what we got before, which is a lot of people very upset because they didn't understand what the process, the then-process was, and although the then-process was followed correctly, it still left people feeling very unhappy, because people do have a stake in trees. And it's not just a stake in downtown trees. Chuck and I live in a neighborhood that is just absolutely jam-packed full of trees that are, seem to be coming down at an increasingly rapid rate, and, you know, and all I can tell my neighbors is, I'm sorry, but that, you know, it has to go. It's, that's just the way it is. But if there's a process there that's open, that people can have an opportunity to say what they want to say, I think you'll get a lot better result in terms of public trust and confidence.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you. Okay. Other questions for Casia? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Now it's David's turn, and following David will be Christine Kidd. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor and city councilors of this fine city of Salem, I've been planting trees in the local area since nineteen sixty-five. I don't know how many dozens of the darn things I've planted. I can actually show you some of them, and they're getting pretty big. But we've had nine trees, just in our little local area in our neighborhood, and then, not in the whole Nen area, private trees cut this last year. People, for some reason, new people move into a house and they see a tree in their yard, and they don't want it, and they bring it down. And I've seen nine of these things come down, and I'm not sure if all the trees I have planted makes up for the carbon sink that those trees used to have in them, because I've planted a lot, but they're, they're, the one I planted first is only fifty years Now, the earth is warming up. We all know that now. We have seen the worst wildfires ever in California, Oregon, and Washington. And the only thing that actually modifies the temperature, particularly the urban heat island in cities, is trees. And if we don't treat these trees like the treasure that they really are to our communities and our lives, then we're not doing the right thing by the earth and by future generations. And the reason why I support this independent urban tree commission is because it is independent, and it's a commission made up of ordinary citizens, many of them with expertise in the field, and we should really go after this type of body. Goal one in the land use laws was citizen participation. That's why I thought maybe nine people wouldn't be bad on this, because you'd get more citizen participation. So we should remember that. And I will now shut up.
Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. All right. Next, Christine Kidd, followed by Brian Hines.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I am Christine Kidd, and I just wanted to express my support for this very thoughtful proposal. I am very impressed with the work that all the individuals have done on Chapter eighty-six, revising the code. I think that Salem deserves that Tree City USA Award from the Arbor Day Foundation, if you pass this, because it seems like a really terrific idea, including the citizens, creating more transparency, helping the community to trust the political process in Salem. So it's a great idea. I support it. I just wanted to stand up and tell you all that. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Kidd? All right. Thank you very much. Brian Hines, followed by Michael Livingston.
Hi, Brian Hines, one zero three seven one, Lake Drive, Southeast Salem. Yes, the urban tree commission is kind of the key point in what we've heard today. I went through the staff report this afternoon, including the additions. The recorder's office was nice enough to send them to me. So I counted up thirteen people in favor, and organizations in favor of an urban tree commission, and it wasn't that they were equally balanced. They won an urban tree commission, their backup plan was for the Parks Board. That includes six neighborhood associations. There was only one against, and that was, I can count that as a half-four, the way I interpret it. The Salem Realtors Association said, "The commission will only serve to delay development." And I read that as, hey, that's a good thing, when there's trees that are being cut down unnecessarily. We don't want a healthy, beautiful tree cut down for a parking lot or for a subdivision if it doesn't need to be. Well, subdivision would be unlikely as a street tree. So that's a good thing. So what I wanted to share is, as Casia was speaking about, and several people already have talked about, is the need for special expertise on the tree commission. You recall, you might recall, the back at your first hearing, Kristin Ramstad spoke. After she did, I wrote a blog post called, "Five Reasons Why Salem Should Have An Urban Tree Commission," and she was an urban forester with twenty years of experience who works for the state of Oregon. So she, I believe, was on the citizens committee that came up with the proposals, but she brings an outsider's perspective, and she said that members of similar commissions in other Oregon cities provide expert advice on tree issues that often is superior to what city staff can offer, since these volunteers frequently have more arborist knowledge. So that's a reason to have a dedicated urban tree commission. Ramstad also noted that groups of people tend to make better decisions than individuals do on their own, so an urban tree commission would bring multiple perspectives to bear on a tree removal question, whereas currently, a single individual, the city public works director, makes the final decision about street tree removals. So having nine rather than seven would be, would be better, I'm sure, from her point of view. And her second point was that government openness and transparency would be enhanced by an urban tree commission. She noted that Salem citizens no longer trust city officials to properly care for this town's street trees for some excellent reasons we don't have to go into that are part of history and the US Bank trees and some other issues. When street tree decisions are made behind closed doors by city staff, then there's opportunity for this lack of trust. So it seems to me like there's a consensus agreement that we need the openness and the transparency, and then the issue is, what sort of a body is going to provide that openness and transparency? And I would urge you to consider, or to go with an urban tree commission with people who have, you know, real expertise in trees, because I know as a property owner with ten acres, I mean, it's very difficult. We're calling arborists all the time, and you get different opinions even from certified arborists. We've gone, wanted one big fir to be taken down, we got a second opinion for another certified arborist, and he said, "It's fine." And it still is fine after fifteen years. So that's the reason to have lots of expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Lewis?
I have one question. Thanks for coming, Brian. This is regarding the email you sent to the city council on September twenty-first, and in it you say, "To help avoid costly and time-consuming appeals to lube, I urge you to consider allowing an appeal to the hearing officer of urban tree commission decisions."
Well, Casia has kind of changed my mind a little bit on that. I forgot about the cost. I've been a part of hearing officer issues in my neighborhood dealing with groundwater, and, yeah, you're right. You know, it is complicated, and if what Casia said is correct, and being an attorney it probably is, you know, it sounds like there's limited grounds of appeal. I was picturing that you could come in and they would essentially serve to look at the evidence like the, like the urban tree commission would. So I don't know. I said that, but now I'm wondering whether I should have said that. I think after hearing Casia talk, I've kind of changed my mind that maybe we don't need the hearings officer, and particularly, we don't need to go directly to the hearings officer.
I thought we had common ground for a minute.
No, we do, I think.
Thank you.
Michael Livingston, followed by Sarah Owens.
Mayor Peterson, members of the council. My name is Michael Livingston. I live in Ward One. With me tonight are Sarah Owens and Woody Dukes, who were also signed up, but we're here on behalf of the Can Do Neighborhood Association. Can Do has a particular interest in this issue, and particularly in the trees in the downtown area, because we're well aware of the contribution that they make to the atmosphere and the livability of the downtown area. And so we followed the development of this proposal over the last year. Patricia Farrell, who I would commend to you, along with everybody else, for her hard and diligent work and her problem-solving approach to all issues that involve this, this sometimes troublesome question. In July, the In July, the Can Do Board voted to commend the work of Ms. Quillan's committee and also the work of Patricia Farrell, and to urge you to adopt the proposal with three recommended, recommended amendments. Two of those amendments are now incorporated in the provision that you're considering tonight. Those are, first, to make it clear in the ordinance itself that an application for a variance is part of the permit application process, so that the notification requirements apply to variances, as well as other grounds for seeking a permit to remove a tree. The second of those now incorporated in the proposal before you tonight is that the same decision-making process applied to variance applications as applied to other grounds for, for applying for a permit to remove a tree. So I'll just speak briefly tonight about our third recommendation. And it's understandable, in a way, that that's not incorporated in the proposal before you, because it really is a fairly fundamental policy decision for this council to make. And that is, appeals of the director's decision to allow or deny a permit be limited to the applicant and the neighborhood association where the trees are located, the neighborhood association with that area. And we believe there are strong policy grounds to support that limitation and also that there are practical benefits of it also. The policy grounds are stated in Salem Revised Code, Chapter 64, which gives neighborhood associations the responsibility to represent neighborhood and neighborhood concerns before public bodies and agencies. No individual citizen has a private interest in a city tree. Whatever interest that is, is collective and should be expressed collectively, we believe. And that's best done through the neighborhood association. We also think there are practical benefits to focus the issues on appeal, lighten the load of the Urban Tree Commission, if that's the way the council decides to go. Those are our comments. And again, we commend the work of Ms. Quillan and also of Ms. Farrell, and urge you to consider the limitations that Can Do recommends.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Livingston? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Michael, thank you very much for the work you, Sarah, and Woody did on this. I, you really have done a great deal. And what were the two issues that have been incorporated that Can Do recommended?
The, the two recommendations that we made that are incorporated, as Ms. Farrell outlined. First, it was unclear in the origi, in the original iteration of this ordinance that variances were just another ground for getting a permit. Variance was in one section and the other grounds for permits were in a separate one. And what was missing was the connection. And now, the way that this current proposal is drafted, it's clear that a variance is, is another grounds for seeking a permit. And so all of the notification requirements that apply to permit applications also require, apply to variance applications. The second one, Counsel, Counselor Bennett, is that the same decision-making process is applied to both variant, application for a removal authority under a variance and also on the other grounds. Under the original one, the director decided the permit, then it went to the Urban Tree Commission. If it were a variance, the Tree Commission decide, made the initial decision and then it went to the contested case through a hearings officer. We didn't think that made a lot of sense, that it should be the same decision-making process applicable to both. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
I agree with Counselor Bennett that you and your folks and Ms. Quillan and her committee have done a terrific job here. I want to look to number three, and this may be a question that you can't answer, but I'm sure the staff can answer. Is every part of the city covered by a neighborhood group? Because that would be a concern if there are some parts of the city that aren't covered by a neighborhood group. And if they all are, are those neighborhood groups active or not active at all? I mean, some of them are pretty much quiescent. Yeah. Yeah.
Counselor Anderson, I'm going to defer to staff.
I thought you would.
Yeah. Yes.
Glenn Gross, the Community Development Director. I believe all of the areas of the city are covered. The one area that I'm, I'm struggling a bit with right now is the State Mental Hospital area. I'm, there's, there's, there's something nagging, but that, that area's not actually in a neighborhood association. Other than that, they're, they're all covered.
Thank you.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. This is actually just a comment off of Counselor Anderson. I don't want us to get off. I know we're, we're in the middle of testimony. Could you look and see if the state fairgrounds are in a neighborhood association? Because it was my understanding, they were in Lansing, and most recently, Lansing was given a map that didn't show them in Lansing. I didn't see them actually in any neighborhood. So that would be an area that could potentially have tree issues, and it could just be the map.
No, actually, I was just talking to Urban Planning Administrator Anderson Ogilvy, and she tells me the fairgrounds also are not covered by a neighborhood association.
Is that new?
I don't think so. I don't think that's new.
We need to have a conversation after this.
Okay.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for Mr. Livingston?
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony.
And Mayor Peterson, the other two folks that I, are signed up, they don't need to testify, so Ms. Owens and Ms., and Mr. Dukes are here as part of Can Do.
I see. Okay. Well, they're welcome to testify if they would like to, but if not, okay. All right. Then we'll move on to Ken Beerly. Welcome.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Ken Beerly, 2308 Tarmigan Street, Northwest and West Salem. And I'm representing, I'm Chair of the Glen Gibson Creek Watershed Council. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment. Your staff made a presentation to the Watershed Council, answered questions, and really helped us work through this issue. And we've submitted a letter that's in your packet, and we think that the, the central core of the recommendations are solid, well-thought-out. The Advisory Committee did a marvelous job, and staff has done a great job. The ordinance, in the hard work of the Citizen Advisory Committee, recognizes the many different values of trees. They're not just a visual asset to the city, but they have ecological values that are important. It's critical that you keep in mind that this applies only to city trees, trees on city property. It doesn't apply to the trees in my backyard and other people's backyards. And it's really important, though, that the tree, that the city trees be recognized for many of the services that they provide. And for that specific reason, we've suggested that we've support the Urban Tree Commission and recommended that either a representative of the Watershed Council, be a little bit self-serving here, but we, we recommend that someone that has expertise in the other functions other than visual and aesthetic functions be involved in the Urban Tree Committee. And we believe that that could help. It's the balance, and it also speaks to the issues raised by Can Do, because there are Watershed Councils that represent larger geographic areas than just the city itself. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Got staff doing great work. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions? Yes. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. You were here, I think, when Ms. Quillan said, with respect to designate a person from the Downtown Central District or Downtown Historic District. She didn't think that was necessarily a good idea, because it would just pigeonhole people and, and lessen the pool of applicants. And I presume that might also be the situation with your recommendation. I guess my question is, if, let's say if we go the way the, the ordinance is now, I presume that people from your Watershed Council, because they're interested in this, who might well want to apply for one of the three citizens' commissions.
Oh, absolutely. And the, the point, however, I think, is that it's important to have some criteria. I think, as was read earlier, the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, you have to be breathing and alive and living in the city to be a member. And I think it's important to have some criteria, because fundamentally, they're, they're providing direction to the city on these assets that have significant importance to the city and other.
May I have a follow-up question?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, thank you. The description is, right now, it's for one member with expertise in urban forestry, arbor culture, or horticulture, culture. Would there be people on the, on the Watershed Council who have that specific expertise?
There could be.
Okay.
More likely, you would find someone with an ecological background, like
Sure, sure.
Botany.
Right. I understand.
Rather than horticulture.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse us. I'm sorry. Mr. Beerly, I apologize for walking away while you were still at the podium. I was actually going to ask you a question. Sorry. And I, I want to make a comment, too, and to thank you for the work that you and, and the STRAB Environmental Learning Center and other groups did for the film that was shown just last weekend, or weekend before.
We were quite honored to have you there. Thank you.
That was really well, very well done about the river. And that brings me to my, my point. Do you think that with the Watershed Councils, that they would feel that it's an extra burden if we were to ask them to nominate someone for a commission, for instance, if, if we do have particular seats that are for certain expertise?
I can only speak for our Watershed Council. I know that there are people who are very interested in being involved in the deliberations that the city has, but I can't speak for the other ones.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. That concludes the list. Was there anyone else who was here this evening that did want to speak to the issue on the trees on city-owned property? Oh, yes.
I was just wondering if I could speak to the Barrowna ordinance or the lab or
No, no, no. This is a public hearing just on the tree ordinance. Right. Uh-huh. Okay. All right. Then I will ask for staff to come back. I think we had some questions for Ms. Farrell. Okay. I see hands up. Counselor Bennett, then Counselor Anderson, and Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, Patricia, just to compliment you, I got to see, I, I felt like I saw five of your presentations on this. They were really well-done, really, I think, explained this. What did you, could you kind of go back in and talk just for a second about what you found? I don't, I haven't been able to find a copy of your chart, or of your PowerPoint, but what you found relative to the recommendation on sort of the commission? You know, is it a tree commission? Is it Parks and Rec? Is it a, you know, is it the shade tree advise? What, could you go back to that slide and explain? I, I just want to see again what you found out there.
Are you talking about the public comments that we received?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not sure that I have that table that was in your packet, where I summarized some of the comments.
Well, what did you find relative to that? It, it's mainly just an independent commission. Is that pretty much what you found?
Yeah. Everybody that we spoke to, with the exception of the Salem Realtors Association, was in support of an urban tree commission. And then they, there was also, I think, based on the work groups that we had with the council, you know, where the idea of having the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board take on that role. People mentioned that many times and said that that was, if, if that was the fallback option, they would support that with some of those qualifications that Casilla Quillan and talked about, like more expertise, getting rid of some of those designated slots, having more members, were kind of the, the main comments that we received on that.
What is the, just one more. What is the role of the Parks Commission right now? I'm not, are they like softball ponds, rivers? I, I want to understand what it is they do. Kind of, what's their
You know, Mark Bechtel was staffing that board till just a few months ago, so if Mark wouldn't mind.
It's kind of their
I've never staffed that board.
If you were to describe a typical meeting, Mr. Bechtel, what, what would be the kinds of issues that group works with under its current configuration?
Sure. Mark Bechtel, interim Urban Development Director, and until recently, Parks and Transportation Person. The, the SPRAB, or the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, really, their mission has been to advise the, the mayor and council, as well as staff, on all issues dealing with the park system. Everything from acquisition of parkland to the development of parks, the funding and planning and master planning of parks, additions to parklands, amenities. Also, they have, they recommend on a lot of our programs, as far as recreation programs and even senior services. So it, it's rather all-encompassing, but I'd say they've mainly focused on parks' planning issues.
And so, would you say, Mr. Bechtel, that they're, kind of the work they do is pretty meaty stuff? I mean, this is not, they're, they're dealing with fairly complicated at times, and within their area of advice, pretty expansive, it sounds like. I mean, this is a, this is a high-end assignment. I mean, you're really expected to do a lot of work. Do they do a lot of work?
They, they do, Counselor. They have a number of subcommittees that are formed based on the different areas that they are involved in. The SPIF grants, the Salem Parks Improvement Fund, applications go through them, and they recommend awards for grants. All the large master planning processes that we've had involving parks involve subcommittees of SPRAB, naming of parks. And so they, they, I would say they have a very broad responsibility. And you have an excellent membership there, at least in my time there. Excellent membership, very dedicated, very knowledgeable to the park system.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to that, Mr. Bechtel. So it sounds to me like if you maybe set aside the planning commission, the Parks Advisory Commission has the busiest workload of any commission in the city.
I, I could concur with that.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I have some questions for Ms. Farrell and maybe for the city attorney, because I am an attorney, so I've actually read the whole statute, and I have a bunch of questions about, about what's going on. Let's first talk about, it's on page three of the ordinance, and the site would be, in the definition section, O-10, sub-T. And it says, "Risk tree means a tree or part thereof that has a high probability of failure or which, and other things, which poses a potential threat." So my question is, potential when? Potential tomorrow? Potential 10 years from now? You know, I'm kind of interested in whether it's, is potential imminent or is potential sometime in the future?
I believe that a risk tree is one that has a high potential for failure in the near future, and that the target, for instance, what would be damaged if it fails, is critical. And that it can't be moved. It's not, you know, like a picnic table. It's a, it's a, you know, a house or a school or something like that.
I guess I draw an analogy, and it just came to me now. We have a high potential of the big earthquake hitting us with the Cascadia subduction, but we don't know when it's going to happen. So is that the same sort of thing, or you have enough expertise to say it's going to happen soon?
I might have to defer to our urban forester, but I believe there's a whole risk evaluation process through the Society of Arbor Culture. And so it's a very methodical process to determine the level of risk that a tree poses by any particular defect.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then, kind of in a follow-up question, I look at 86090, sub-A, which says, "A permit may be granted if one or more of the following criteria are met." And I look at number three, structurally unsound, posing an imminent risk. Number four, acute fatal disease, path, a strong potential pathogen could spread and kill other trees, infestation, high likelihood that an infestation could spread and kill other trees. So when I look at those, they're all talking about an imminent threat as opposed to a potential threat in risk tree. And I wonder how the definition of risk tree relates to the definition of C, C, city tree removal criteria? Because at least three of those, to me, dis- high likelihood that an infestation could spread and kill other trees. So when I look at those, they're all talking about an imminent threat as opposed to a potential threat in risk tree. And I wonder how the definition of risk tree relates to the definition of city tree removal criteria, because at least three of those, to me, discuss imminent threat as opposed to potential threat.
Again, I believe it would go back to that risk assessment. And for instance, the ones related to diseases, these are specific diseases that have been identified as severe risk for spreading. And then for the imminent risk to person or property, that gets back to that risk assessment and a risk tree and the target and whether it can be remedied in some other way other than removal.
So, I don't know if-
I'm not sure if that answered your question.
I don't know if the forester has anything to add to that or maybe Director Fernandez, but it sure seems to me that the definitions in 09-0 are more precise and, you know, maybe the definition of risk tree, I mean, I'm not going to make any changes for them, but maybe risk tree ought to be that specific as to the criteria there. Then, let's see. I have a question on page 13, 12 and 13.
If I may, just real quick.
Sure.
09-0 is the criteria where the other, the prior section is a definition.
Okay.
So, and the criteria, really 09-0 is the meat-
Got it.
Of, of the code. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish with the council adopting this code is having, you know, written criteria that if we're going to remove a tree or if a citizen wants a tree removed in front of their property, that they can come to us and say, hey, it meets one or more of these criteria specifically. And then the appeal body, if it's appealed, can look at and go, yep, you've met the criteria or you haven't met the criteria.
I very, I very much appreciate that because, you know, a lot of lawyers in statutory construction will say, look at the definition, look at the definition. So I'm happy to hear that now that, that a risk tree is really going to be one that satisfies the criteria to remove.
I believe that is the case.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you very much. And I think this is a question for you, Director Fernandez. Now I'm looking at removals by the city. How often historically has the city on its own said, we're going to remove this tree? Well, I actually know you removed two in front of my house, so you-
Me too.
Yeah. And Councilor Bennett. So does that happen on a regular basis?
Yeah, it happens on a fairly regular basis. You know, we either assess the tree and it's meeting, well, I mean, we already operate under these kinds of criteria when we do our own assessment. Or there's a project coming. There's a street widening, there's a water or sewer pipe, or the tree is impacting another part of the infrastructure. You know, so, yeah, trees, trees are removed fairly often. Trees are planted.
Sure. Well, no, you planted-
As well.
Replace the trees in front of my house and I hope in front of Councilor Bennett's house and they're looking great.
Well, every, every, every street project comes with tree plantings.
Perfect. So when you remove them, you would be operating under the criteria in 09-0 that I read three of them and there's five or six criteria for the most part.
Under the risk assessment.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a- If it's an impact to a project, then it just meets that.
That's a whole different reason to go. Then, I think this is my final question, Mayor, if I may. I'm looking at the standing to appeal issue. You know, and this, it's the same, it's subs-
Anybody.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I look at it. That's what I look at it. It basically says, "Any interested person." And it doesn't say who an interested person in it is. And I think Councilor Nanki kind of has it right. It's anybody.
It's not delivered or anything.
Yeah. And to me, in many of these types of ordinance, an interested person is someone who has appeared before the group or the body that's making a decision. And I see how that's a problem here because the administrator's going to make the decision first and then it will go to the urban tree commission. So at that level, not everybody would come. So was that why we went to any interested person or?
Well, here, here's our, here's our theory. And the theory, a lot of the idea behind the way this code is constructed with respect to appeals is based on the way we run the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission, which is, we're going to make a change to non-street parking, to non-street parking limitation. So we take a barricade and we post a sign that says, there's going to be a change here, you know, call us or go to the website if you want to find out more. And we let the neighborhood association know specifically what it is. Well, with the tree, we feel it's the same thing. There is, the interested people are not just the people who live there and the neighborhood association, but people who walk by, people who drive by. So that's the whole point of posting the tree. If there's a tree posted in South Salem, somebody who lives, works, and operates in Lancaster will never see that sign-
Yeah.
Because they don't deal with that tree, they don't, they don't enjoy that tree on a day-to-day basis. But the theory here is, if you enjoy that tree, if you feel you want to make a statement about the tree, the sign will be there for you to be able to make the-
And I suppose on the same situation, the Glen Creek watershed people, they have an overarching interest in this thing. So even though they're living in West Salem, they may want to appeal a tree someplace in Southeast Salem because they're an interested person. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Lewis.
Yes, I've got a, I guess a housekeeping question for you, Patricia. In the current ordinance, 86.165, it talks about the creation of the Shade Tree Committee. It talks about its responsibilities. The committee shall be advisory to the agency and the director. I'm not sure what agency means.
I think I can answer that. That code language is very old. There used to be a Parks District in the city of Salem. So I believe that that language dates back. In fact, the director in that language originally was the Community Services Director or the Parks Director. You know, Parks has been, and over the last 30, 40 years, Parks has been a unit of a number of different agencies. So when, when Public Works was given the responsibility of Parks, the director became the Public Works Director. And I think the agency at that, I think that's just, the agency part of that language is just old language.
Okay, so under, under the current code, the advisory committee reports to who?
It's advisory to the Public Works Director.
Just the director?
Right.
Okay. Second question, and this goes to the appeal process. Again, in the current ordinance, it allows that appeal to the hearings officer. In the new version, it states crystal clearly, "In all cases, once a decision has been made during the appeal process, that decision is final and no further appeal or review is available." Why, from a staff point of view, why, why not allow that final appeal?
I'll take that one. I've let, I've let Patricia take all the technical ones. You know, I think it's, I think the construction theory here was simply to, to be clear that this is the final step. There is an administrative decision and then citizens who are interested in appealing have a place to go to a citizen-based appeal body. And then that's it. That's, you don't, you don't get another bite at the apple. Hearings officers, for the, for the most part, are used in, in legal issues, land use issues, that kind of thing. This is really a discussion about a disposal, a management of a city asset. You know, trees, street trees, public trees are really nothing more than a city asset in the end. So, so we didn't feel that there was a need for more and more appeal. Administrative decision, citizens have a right, and I think that was a big deal. And you see from the testimony that the ability to appeal the administrative decision to a group of citizens that are basically a proxy of the council to say, do you agree or disagree that it meets the criteria? And then that's it. We either dispose of the asset or don't dispose of the asset. We didn't feel that there was a need to do a lot more process or legalese or anything of the sort. So that's, that's the theory behind it.
Okay. And I guess my final comment question. I'm noticing in the presentation, there is an absence of what I would call contact with business people, especially in the downtown area. I don't see where anybody in the downtown business district is referred to. I do see where the Chamber of Commerce might have been notified, but no contact. Especially the businesses in downtown to have no input. Can you maybe explain what extent you went to to get input from those folks?
Well, everyone was contacted via a press release and on the website and the Facebook site. We did not specifically target downtown. We went to the Home Builders Association and the Salem Realtors and the Chamber of Commerce, feeling that those groups would cover kind of that aspect of, of input. And we didn't receive comment, well, except from Salem Realtors, we did not receive any comment or even request for presentation from those groups. So I'm, I'm feeling like maybe they didn't think it was a high priority for their groups to, to comment.
Counselor, it was important to us from the outset that there be a variety of voices and interests represented in this issue. So if you, can you go back to the, I think it was your second slide that had the, in fact, Counselor, I think you were on that committee.
Yeah.
You know, so you see the variety of, of representation there on, on the original committee that helped us put this together. And we felt it was important that there, as, as we always do, that there be a variety of interests represented so we can get a, a balanced recommendation to the council. So, so all these folks certainly knew about, and I believe we kept them apprised throughout. So, so the folks that you see there were notified throughout the process and even late in the process of going out to, to the public.
And Counselor, if I may, Mark Bechtel. Wes Boucher actually is a downtown businessperson and he served on that committee.
Counselor Lewis, did you have a question?
No, that's it, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Counselor Nanki followed by Counselor Benars, then Dickey, then Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question in regards to current number of appeals that take place on an annual basis?
I think it's about a half a dozen.
And of that half a dozen, how many, let me phrase that a different way. With criteria in place, clear, very concise criteria, any estimate of how many appeals may come forward in the future after the passage of this? Or how many of the original appeals were based on a lack of criteria that-
Well, there was no criteria. So it was really dependent on, on, you know, the professional opinion of, of our urban forester and then a review by the Shade Tree Advisor Committee. I took a look at that early on in our process. In fact, Jan pulled the records, I think for three years, Jan. And that's where I came up with the number, about a half dozen a year. And I think of, of the 18, 20 that I looked at, I think only two, there was disagreement where the Shade Tree Advisor Committee didn't agree with the urban forester. I think in, and in several of those cases, in several other cases, it was, well, they want to cut down three, can you cut down two? Or, well, we don't want to cut down any, but maybe one would be okay. So I mean, there was, there was good work by the advisory committee to really look at it without the benefit of criteria and try and figure out a way to address the issue. So the biggest, you know, the, the biggest one was the State Street issue with US Bank. That was the, which led to us, you know, the council motion to rework the code. That was the most controversial. The second most was probably the High Street ones out here by DaVinci. And there's been a couple of others where it was worked out and the vast majority were just, you know, there was an appeal and the appeal, either there was support for it or not supported. And, you know, since y'all came back to me and I had to stamp them approved, my recollection is the vast majority of them were just signed off and it was fine. There was no, no issue.
If, a couple of other quick ones as well, kind of along a different line in regards to variance. It's hell getting old. Variances, removal criteria, replacement, solar access. Did anybody mention solar access whatsoever as more and more people start to put solar panels on their house, especially if you're on a street where your house is facing south and you have large trees? Potentially one gets diseased or you only have one out there and it dies and you don't want to replace it and you have six other trees on your property that tend to be? How would one add in a solar access component?
Nobody brought that up specifically. I guess in that circumstance, there would be the variance process that the person could-
On item C, I think it was on that, which was-
You know, if you were, if you wanted to put up solar panels, you could perhaps prove that there would be an unreasonable hardship to you if you were not allowed, if that tree were to be replaced or that tree, you know, taking out a healthy tree might be a little bit harder to get through. But if it was disease or a replanting project, then you could go through that process, through the variance process.
Okay.
And this is, that's a great one for the, the appeal body. Right. Hey, it's a perfectly healthy tree. It's, I want to put up solar panels. Staff may say, well, boy, yikes, the tree's healthy, we really don't agree. Appeal it to, to, to the, to the body and have your neighbors and citizens tell you, yeah, it's okay with us or no, it's not. I mean, that's, 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 there is a way in and-
Okay.
No different than last, you know, two weeks ago, folks came here and talked about RM1 versus RM2.
Right. If I can have one follow-up on that one then. So would, because there's also no exemption for architectural feature obstruction, which is kind of how we got into a big chunk of the US Bank piece as well as the fact that the trees were actually making contact with the, with the building.
Right.
Would that fall into that variance potential then in the same place?
It would. In fact, we talked a lot about that issue and where that would fit in here. So, so if that issue were to come up, you know, after this code is implemented, there would not be the architectural issue. They would probably, there were some impacts to, to infrastructure. That's why the commercial street ones were removed. That's why staff a year, two years before had suggested that the State Street ones be removed because the curb, if you remember, there were holes in the street that you could, you know, sink your leg into that were being caused by, by the trees. In this situation, they probably would have had to do some kind of, they would have had to convince the, the staff and the appeal body that there is an issue. In fact, when we removed the sidewalk to replace it, there was tremendous impacts of root intrusion. So it would have only been another year or two before there would have been problems. So perhaps they could have cored the sidewalk to kind of see or once, once some of the sidewalk panels were removed, it would have been more obvious-
Ground penetrating radar.
To, to be able to, to provide some level of evidence that in fact, there is a problem to the infrastructure and therefore they have to be removed.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Counselor Benars followed by Counselor Dickey followed by Bennett.
There's been a lot of good questions asked this evening, so I'll keep mine short. I'm looking more at the expertise of where we head off, the people who are making the decision. One of the, one of the things I wanted to talk about, one of the proposals was, is that ultimately leaving it to a hearings officer for, to render a decision. And I was hoping that somebody could tell me, what expertise does a hearings officer have? Not necessarily in being an arborist, expect they're not, but in, in respect to rendering decisions.
So currently, our hearings officer is an attorney who's contracted with, sorry, currently the hearings officer is, is an attorney who contracts with the city and so has expertise, I guess I would state in reading through the ordinances and applying the criteria that are articulated in either our ordinances or in administrative rules and allowing for a public process, allowing for individuals to appeal and to argue how they were wronged in the process. But they don't have specific, our, currently our, our hearings officers don't specifically have expertise in an area of arborist or trees specifically. And we wouldn't necessarily hire for that. It's not the purpose of a hearings officer.
Correct. I agree with that. And so the other question I had, there was some conversation this evening about the cost of a hearings officer being rather expensive. Isn't this part of what their normal business is?
So we contract, so I don't know the specifics, specifics of the hearings officer contract. They, they, we have a hearings officer and it's a firm in Corvallis that currently serves the city. And they are here a couple of times a month, hearing a number of issues for the planning department as well as things like civil exclusions. And so that, that would be, the hearings would be a part of that normal work that they do for the city of Salem.
Generally, they wouldn't, the hearings officer would not come here in this case if it was an appeal just for that one item. There would be other things that would be-
Not for the one item, not typically. We tend to try to group together hearings for the city.
Okay, so cost effective at least. The other question I had, I guess goes back to staff and it has to do with the seven members, of which there's only one actual expert in urban forestry at all. Why did that end up coming that way? Why wasn't it, why wasn't it a majority of professional arborists on this committee?
I think we were starting with the existing Shade Tree Advisory Committee structure and building on that. And so the current structure for that committee, the advisory committee, is that there's three members from SPRAB, there's one from downtown, and there's two at-large. And so we thought just by, you know, we would add that, you know, someone who had some specific expertise-
And so we thought just by, you know, we would add that, you know, someone who had some specific expertise on it without increasing the number to, to dramatically from the, the current six members to seven.
The other thing, well, let's see, I'm trying to find it. It was more than just an arborist. I suspect we have, there were other words that were used in reference to an arborist in that particular whose, whose expertise is in the area. I was wondering if you could tell me what those other two things are.
Arboret culture is the care of trees specifically. So it could be, you know, someone who is trained in trimming or spraying, things like that. And then horticulture is just generally, more generally plants, you know, landscaping. And then urban forestry is sort of a specific subset of being an arborist, is for urban trees as opposed to forestry in general.
Okay. Well, I'm looking for the expertise and the third one, it was, you said it was, what was the third one you mentioned?
So we have urban forestry, arboret culture and horticulture.
And how do they relate to trees then? They're more vegetation.
They all relate to trees at some, in some level of training. We did not specifically say a certified arborist because that's, that's even a higher level of expertise in, in training and that, you know, that's an option, but these are more general categories.
One of the other places I was looking, I was looking at other boards and commissions. Do any of the other boards and commissions use a, a sub-board of experts that they go to for advice? If you were, if you were a committee, and I couldn't see any of the, of all the boards and commissions that we have currently, where they might go off to a panel of attorneys or a panel of plumbers or whatever they would go to.
That's called the staff. They rely on, I remember, a lot of these, you know, we, we create, you know, kind of a slot for expertise and you hear from the citizens the importance of having some level of expertise. But really, these, these citizens committees are, you know, they really act as juries. You know, they, whatever, wherever we end up, whether it's Sprab or an urban tree commission or another body, you know, our first step will be to train that body in this code and how, you know, what the criteria means and they can start to form the idea of what they think it means so that they're ready to act. I mean, in the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission, I go to that one because that's, you know, I came up through the traffic world. There are no traffic engineers. Sometimes we get one, but, but mostly they're just citizens who are interested and our staff trains them. Hey, this is, this is, these are the warrants for installing a stop sign. These are the warrants for limiting speed. These are the warrants for a signal. And then based on that, they listen and they make really good decisions based on the, the training that we have and really just as, like a jury does.
Part of what I'm getting down to in reference to all these questions was a matter of, I'm trying to figure out how not to make the decisions so political if you leave it up to an arborist. But at the same time, I'm trying to figure out a way that you have public input, the voice is heard at somewhere along the way. So, thank you.
Counselor Dickey followed by Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you so much for a great presentation. And, I mean, really, just reading through the whole report, you know, I, it sounds, I mean, we've got really great feedback. So that's, that's definitely a testament to your presentation and the information that you provided to the community. So this has been really, really helpful. I'm going to take a different turn because we are talking about chapter eighty-six and we've been talking a lot about removing trees. I want to talk about planting trees for a moment. One, one particular question I have, and I just want to make sure that this is happening. Oh, Jesus, it's long. Eighty-six oh six five, section C talks about, in a, like a new construction would be required, I believe, to have a street tree on the property. So that would be one way we replace is through our new construction. So we may be taking down trees somewhere and we may be replacing somewhere else. So I guess the question I have is, because I, you know, I'll just put it out there because this has been 10 years ago. When we built our house, we, I called the city and said, tell me about what I need to do to put a street tree in when we did not live in the house yet. And the city said, well, you know, it's a requirement. It's, what, it's $50 or whatever. But, you know, really, the builder's required to do it, but a lot of times they don't and we don't really enforce that. So I'm just, would like to know if that is actually being enforced as we see an uptick in construction. And so that's one way we can bring in the replacement. And I guess that's either a question or can we make sure that that's actually happening? Because that's one way we can address when we remove trees is by, by putting them in when we are doing building.
We, like I said before, we plant a lot of trees every year. Subdivisions are required to plant street trees. They typically come at the very end so that they're not ruined by the actual pushout of the house construction. Every street improvement comes with street trees. So every project that we did that, that improved a street, not repavings, but, you know, like Skyline or what we're doing out at Edgewater or at Aniola, all comes with street trees. Every time we remove trees, we replant them for, for projects. A lot of the sidewalk construction out here in my neighborhood, some trees had to be removed. Those were replanted. And then, so yeah, the answer is yes. And then we have a contract with Friends of Trees as part of implementing our canopy master plan. And Patricia, if you would do, you know, 20 seconds on the Friends of Trees contract.
Yes, so we've been working for the last two years with Friends of Trees and we're going around to the low canopy neighborhoods and starting with those and doing outreach through them to property owners to see if they want a street tree and if they'll help participate and volunteer. And we've had great success with that and lots of really good feedback. So we're looking for that as a, as an additional way to get particularly the neighborhoods that have less than our, our canopy goal to start with them. So it's been very successful.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter, I want to, just for a second, or Patricia, either one, go back to Counselor Lewis's question because I'm not sure I understood, based on testimony we heard earlier during the public hearing. Is the Shade Tree Advisory Committee still alive inside of all of this? My understanding was this replaced the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
It is alive until you drive a stake through it with...
So this gets rid of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It threw me for a minute. I wasn't sure what we were reading.
It is, it is active. If we had an appeal today, that's the body that would hear it until this comes out.
Right, okay. Yeah, but it will be gone, that whole area will be gone. How many appeals go to CATSIE every year?
Not, about the same. You know, I think we get about, you know, a half dozen. Typically, we post if there's no, if there's no, we used to go to CATSIE no matter what. What we've gone to over the last few years, if we post, if nobody has a concern, then there's no need for CATSIE to hear it. We just adopt.
And it's pretty much the same idea.
Same idea.
Yeah.
Same idea. We don't want, we don't, we don't want to bring citizens in. We don't want to bring the body in for everybody to just say it's a great idea.
Okay. And then finally, I just want to add to your list of issues that brought this forward. When I made the motion, I discovered tonight, two and a half years ago it looked like, or a year and a half ago. I can't tell because my math is so poor tonight. It just, it, I just want to mention Columbia Street also played a role in this where just a neighborhood had a reaction. Yes, downtown made the papers and... But I'll tell you what, Columbia Street, I think for Counselor Dickey and I, were the most striking examples of problems without criteria and without citizen involvement. So I just want you to add that to your list as you talk about this.
That is correct. I've tried to block Columbia Street.
I just don't want to think it's just one thing got this going. It's got more dimension.
Okay, I have a question, but no, Counselor McCoy.
On page 12, you've got a list of, of issues where they can be removed. And one of them says, when trees, city trees have been planted too close to each other and the spacing causes an adverse effect on the neighboring trees, they'll keep the strongest tree. And then it says, the applicant shall bear the cost of tree and stump removal. Then, and you've got that, there's a couple where the applicant has to bear the cost. And then there's other ones where the applicant, it doesn't say that, so I'm assuming they don't bear the cost. What, what...
So if the tree, so the, I'll take a stab and then Patricia can jump in. If the tree is basically healthy, so we are not concerned with a risk, it's not diseased, it's, it's, we don't have any reasons to remove it other than the applicant feels that it's blocking the sun, it's blocking a sign, you know. It's a healthy tree that is causing, you know, some kind of societal or commercial issue, but it still meets the criteria because of, they're too close together. There's a way to be able to do that. Then what this code says is, well, then it's on you. Then it's on the applicant to bear the cost. They, we own them. We give you permission to remove it. You pay for the removal. If it's a diseased tree, then it's really our responsibility to remove it and then the city bears the cost.
Okay, but this, I've just, this is, and the spacing causes an adverse effect on neighboring trees. So is that trees in the guy's, in the person's front yard? Or is that other trees on the city property?
I'll defer to people that drafted the code.
It could, usually it's, if they're spaced too close together, it's effects on other city trees. But I guess it could be, it's affecting your tree on your property too.
Well, I guess...
If it's affecting private property, so if the tree was, then, then we would bear the cost. There's an impact, now the city is impacting private property. But, but if it's, you know, hey, we planted them 30 foot on center and they turned out to be bigger than we thought and really, a couple could be removed because it just doesn't work. But they're otherwise healthy, then, then the applicant would bear the cost.
One more?
Yes, certainly.
And so it, it just strikes me as we get to removals by the city and we get to three and it says, no appeals of decisions related to removals by the city shall be allowed, ever, right?
Right.
So this is, which strikes me as, so the city's never wrong? And nobody has a, nobody can say, wait a minute, I don't think that's right.
Here's what, here's what we were, here's what we were guarding against. So, so the council has decided to widen a street, budgeted for it. We're going to widen the street. There's trees that need to be removed. We didn't want to have the trees take precedence over a CIP decision. So, so we didn't want to create a situation where somebody may want to, really doesn't care about the trees, wants to stop the street improvement. Therefore, now we're in a process of appealing the trees. So, so what that language is about is if there is a project, an infrastructure project, be it a street, a sidewalk, water sewer, then, then there is no appeal. That the project removes the trees and then by practice, we will replant new trees.
Okay, well, I understand that, but that's sort of specific. This says never, no appeal ever on any city decision.
I think that's what it means though.
Well, I know, well, you should say that then, just say, no appeal ever on any city decision. Seems sort of like, final, it doesn't matter, we can't, just saying.
Well, we don't, we don't remove trees for, I mean, we plant them, so we're not, we're not, we don't go around saying, well, it's, you know, it's time for this tree to go. I mean, we only say that a tree has to go because it has one of these issues or there is a project coming. There is no program for just removing trees. So that's, I guess that's why that's, that's written the way it's written.
And if I could just add, if, if there's a project that is a street widening or a project like that, then typically the project engineer goes out to the neighborhood association and presents the project to, to them. And I know trees have come up before, for instance, in Market Swigel, and there was opportunity. The neighborhood felt very strongly about some very large trees and they were able to work around those and kind of move the road over to accommodate those trees. So there is, there is opportunity for public comment on those types of projects as well.
Okay, I have a question and a comment. First of all, I do appreciate so much, Patricia, all of the time you spent going out and talking to neighborhood associations and groups. I know that you really did a thorough job and I, I appreciate that very much. One thing that, and maybe it's in all of this, but I didn't see it. There, is there a cost for filing an appeal?
That would be set, yes, there would be a cost and that would be set by a fee resolution through council.
Do we know today what it will cost or is that something that council needs to decide later?
I don't know what the council is...
I don't think we have, I don't think we have an amount set.
We haven't, so...
So this would give us the authority to then be able to propose an amount to the council as part of the fee resolution.
I see, okay. But what we do know is that anyone would have standing to file an appeal.
Right, that's correct.
Right, okay. They don't have to live in the neighborhood or whatever, anyone within the city limits? Is that the way we define it? We don't even do that. We just say anyone, okay.
Counsel could, counsel could do that, but that's not, that's not what's proposed.
That's not what we're doing. But there will be a cost that, that the...
They, yes, they would have to, they would file a notice of intent to appeal with the, whatever the fee turns out to be.
I see, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, I'm going to close the hearing. And I actually have a substitute motion that I would, or a motion that I would like to make. Counselor Nanki, normally at this point I would turn to you and you would make a motion. How do you want to do this? Pardon me?
I didn't hear what he said.
Our rules do not prevent the mayor from making a motion, so...
Thank you. All right. Okay, well, I move to direct staff to amend the proposed ordinance to remove the proposed urban tree commission and have all appeals of director decisions go to the Salem Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Thank you. And for discussion, I'd like to say, one thing is, I really do appreciate all of the work that's been done by this. And I've had a chance to go out and talk with people, several people are here tonight that I've had a chance to visit with at different places and ask about, you know, what would you think about the idea of Salem Parks and Recreation Board being the board? Because there are only, as we've been told all along, really, only, you know, six or eight appeals in a year. And I hate the thought of establishing a commission that's not going to have really very much authority, much work to do. And I know how difficult it is to create a new commission and populate that with, with people. So I feel very encouraged by the feedback that I've had from people that as long as it is truly a citizen-based appeal process. I have gained the sense that there's a lot of support in the community for, for the appeal process, whether it was the Urban Tree Commission or the Salem Park and Recreation Board, that the issue was not the name of the body, but that it be a citizen-based appeal process as opposed to a hearings officer or opposed to, as opposed to a staff person. So that's why I would recommend Salem Park and Recreation Board to be the authority. With regard to that and the makeup of that board, I know from being on the Boards and Commissions Appointing Committee that there have been times when we've been working on the Salem Park and Recreation Advisory Board positions. And I can remember when Laura Tesler was on council, we sort of sat around and said, well, there's an opening, but what, what's needed there? Where's, where do seem some gaps? And one of the times, it was that there wasn't anyone on there that was actively using the river and the estuary and the landing at the Wallace Marine Park. And we didn't have anyone who was canoeing or kayaking or using our three waterways, our three riverfront parks here in that manner. And so she actually sought someone out for that and I thought it was a good idea. And I really do believe that people with expertise should be the people that we appoint to boards and commissions of any kind. And I would certainly be amenable, if anybody wanted to revise my motion, or maybe I should just do that myself, to say that there should be some designated positions on that board of people who have expertise in those areas. And it could be the same wording that you had in the ordinance recommendation. So that's my motion and it, I do it purely out of wanting to save the time and expense of creating and staffing another commission. Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Benars and then Nanki and then Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, in your kind of revision, do you also agree that it would, it makes sense to take it up to nine members and make it comparable to our planning commission in size? Do you think that...
It is at nine members now. Uh huh. We could add more.
Well, we can't take it to 11. Eh, no, stop now. Never mind. Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm really interested in making sure that as soon as possible, we end up with some... we end up with some expertise associated with this, so.
I do, too.
Yeah. I think that's really important. I thought the addition, the additional discussion of someone with an interest as a possibility in a watershed council for Mr. Bearely was really quite good, too.
I think so, too. I think that's an excellent addition.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll support your motion. I made the motion originally to get this thing started because of just the experience of really understanding.
I remember.
We needed, yeah. Thanks. We really needed to get this out into a public forum. We needed a place for members of the public to come and share their concerns with any decision relative to the public's assets, to the street trees in this case. And I am so pleased with the work that the staff did and others, and certainly you, Madam Mayor, in working on this issue to, I think, bring it forward. I think it'll make a lot of difference in terms of the transparency around an issue that's been very contentious. I think it gives people the, at least the understanding, that if they're having a problem with a decision that's made, there's someplace to go. It was mentioned that I had an issue arise right after I came on council about eight years ago, that a couple of trees in front of a house I own on Church Street had a posted seven-day notice. And I realized, I'm a member of the city council, and I'm, you would think, you know, just I have more understanding of this than the average citizen, just because I've been involved in it for a while. And I could not figure that system out. I had seven days to call somebody to find out about it. Well, come to find out, I probably had no standing under this new ordinance anyway, because I was in the way of a sidewalk project. So probably I couldn't have appealed anyway. But it was one of those, I realized at the time, that I had no opportunity to find out what was going to happen to these two probably, probably 35, 40-year-old sweetgums. And just by saying the word "sweetgums," understand, they needed to go. They were destroying the pavement. They destroyed the lawn in front of this house. But this time of year, they were the most beautiful trees you'd ever see. This is their time of year. So I'm really, I'm really pleased and hopeful that this can move forward, and we can see if this works. And I have been through enough of these. It seems like every time one of these comes up, it occurs in my ward, whether it's downtown, or out where I share space with Counselor Dickey on Columbia Street. It just, I'm in a neighborhood, as Casilla Quillanin pointed out, that's made up of these, of these kinds of trees with these decisions being made. And I'm just really pleased to see it. And the bottom line for me, in many ways, is not just the commission, it's actually having criteria. That probably more than anything surprised me about, our whole system was, while Mr. Fernandez, I have enormous confidence in working with, watching how he has handled this, he really had sort of, kind of a blank slate. I mean, it's sort of like, "Well, Peter, what do you think? Up or down on these trees?" Because there really was no criteria that was really helpful. And I thought that this really resolves that by setting up a whole series of reasons these trees can be removed. So I really hope council will support this, and we can move forward. And then just finally, I think the other thing with the Parks Commission, I hope this hits the ground running, that we have these issues coming up regularly enough to talk about, anyway. I think having an experienced board that understands work, how to handle themselves in terms of public testimony, rather than having to go through a training process, aside from the subject matter, at least in terms of being able to handle this, I think will be very helpful in terms of making this happen the day this passes. It really will exist. It'll have all the potential to fulfill its mission. So I think this is a good motion.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Bednarz, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I think the number seven came up, because that was the urban tree board that was proposed, whether it should be seven or nine. And I should also point out, the current Parks and Rec Board is nine members, of which we have one vacancy. I like what I'm hearing, with one exception. We were asking, we're asking now, this board to perform a, well, it's public opinion, but it's also some expertise in the area. I would really like to see at least one expert on that board that is an expert in forest, urban forestry, aboriculture, and horticulture, if I've said those words correctly. And I don't know, are you willing, if I made that?
Yeah.
Motion. I would like to make the motion, then, to add that at least one expert on the Salem Parks and Recreation Board be an expert in urban forestry, aboriculture, or horticulture.
Second.
Mm-hmm.
And for everything I said, I'm going to speak to the motion, for everything I said, I just think it's another one of those things that we need to have.
Okay.
Expertise in.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, if I could speak to the amendment first. If we have a current opening, that was one of my questions, as it came around to me, was going to be, what's the current status of membership, and when would the next vacancies take place? But if we already have one open, that's a great.
It looks like we have two openings, three openings that will occur in December of 2015. No, no, those, they're eligible for reappointment.
I think if we can get the one in, and then we can work with the...
Do we have a vacancy now?
The advisory board.
No, I think we're full.
I don't think so. Yeah, I think you are.
The website has one person not on here. It says it's vacant.
I can't help the website. We all know about the website.
So then it would be the intent of the amendment, that the next opening would involve the addition of a person with those skills?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. First, the point of order for the city attorney. Is there, there's an amendment to the amended motion? Or a friendly amendment to it?
Friendly, I heard of friendly.
No, the mayor made just a straight motion on the upfront.
Right. But Counselor Bednarz made an amendment.
Which is on the floor to be discussed right now.
Amendment of the motion.
Okay. So, when we get to that, I will vote for what Counselor Bednarz has amended, but I will vote against the amendment that the mayor proposed.
Well, if we don't have any more comments on the amendment, we should vote on that now and get it off the floor.
Yeah. I want to comment on the main amendment of the mayor.
So I still want to go back to previous order with that.
Yeah.
Just a moment. Yeah.
My question is, oh, okay. All right. Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yes, I have a comment on the amendment. I'm going to vote for it. But I want to state, I hope this is true, that in the interim, I would hope the Parks and Recreation Board can seek out any expertise that they need to, to resolve any issue that comes before them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. I will call the question on the amendment to the motion, and I will ask the maker of the amendment, Counselor Bednarz, would you please repeat your amended motion?
My amendment to the motion is that we add at least one expert in the field of urban forestry, aboriculture, or horticulture, to the Salem Parks and Recreation Board.
All right. All right. That's the motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Then we'll go back to my motion, which was seconded by Counselor?
Nanki.
Nanki.
As amended.
As amended.
And if we can go back into normal order, that would be myself, followed by Counselor Anderson.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Anderson.
Yes, and I'd like to thank staff for all the work they did going out, as well as the advisory committee, who looked at everything on the upfront. I think, job well done. I think with the addition of the criteria, there will be very little increase to the activity load to Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. At least, I'm hoping as such. And again, with their familiarity with just the process in general, and the fact that we have an urban forester as a staff, that if you get too many experts, they can all argue with each other as well. But they should be able to hit the ground running straight off, and could always, with notice, pull additional expertise or inquiries to folks they know, because those board members also, I think, have links into the other folks who are testifying here tonight. So that we could, or they would be able to garner some extra knowledge base, even in the form of folks to come down and testify during that appeal process.
Good. Thank you.
So I'm happy with that. I'm hoping they get very little work.
Good.
With the addition of the criteria, because we didn't have it before. So it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much. I'm going to oppose the motion. I'm in favor of the staff recommendation, and I've got five reasons why I will oppose the motion. First, there's been a discussion about the fact that, do we need another commission? Is that going to cost more staff time? Is that going to cost more money? And I guess I'd look at this two ways. Whatever happens here, the shade tree commission is gone. So that's, advisory commission is gone. That's one. We just, a couple meetings ago, consolidated two commissions into one, so there's another commission that's gone. So I think on the overall scheme, it's not going to be much more cost to the city in terms of actual staff time. The staff time may come from some other department of the city, but it's still about the same time. The second concern is, well, how do we know we're going to get people to apply to this commission? This has been an extremely high-profile matter. We've had lots of people testifying. We've had, yeah, it's not as high-profile as the marijuana high-profile, but it's, it's, you know, I think there's lots of people who are going to apply for this commission. So I'm not really concerned about, are we going to have enough people to fill it? And I'm also in favor of it's seven. I was talking to retired Chief Justice of the Oregon Supreme Court the other day, who said that the best size for a commission is seven. And so I think seven is a good size. So I think that will make it easier to get people to apply. Third reason is, I think the Parks Commission has a huge caseload. They're already doing a lot of things. And no one, we really don't know how the Parks Commission actually feels about this. And what we understand is, is that they're really on an overall broadening, planning, sports, water expertise, you know, all the sort of things that we're talking about. This is a different, a whole different area that is looking at trees. The only Parks Commissioner, or at least that I know how they feel about it, is Casilla Quillanin, who's in favor of the Uniform Commercial Tree. Uniform Tree Commission, Urban Tree Commission, the UTC. And the fifth reason is, all the input we have received, except for the realtors who didn't really flesh out their opposition other than one sentence, all the input we have received from citizens, and from neighborhood groups, and other people that have, other groups that have commented, has been, "We want a UTC," and their fallback position has been the Parks Commission. So I think we should go along with the vast majority of the citizen input. I think we should go along with the staff recommendation, which came from a committee that was up there, that was a very broad representational group of the community, that said, "We want the Urban Tree Commission," as opposed to the Parks Commission. So I'm certainly in support of all the criteria, and I'm supportive of the need to take this out of the hands of the staff, but I think the Urban Tree Commission is the way to go. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. I just, I guess, kind of piggybacking on Counselor Anderson, I support the Parks Board serving as the Urban Tree Commission, but I definitely would want to know, after this has been in place for a while, is this working well? I would hope that staff would come back to us if, you know, if it just isn't quite working, that at that time, then they can come back and propose to us.
Me, too.
To create something separate. You know, I, I mean, I think it's, I mean, it seems like a good solution. I'm looking at their comments. They have said, you know, they're willing to take this on with someone with expertise in urban forestry or trees, as being part of their board. And, you know, I appreciate their willingness to be able to do that, and their vote. And that actually wasn't their first one. Their first one was to form an Urban Tree Commission. But I definitely would want to know. I mean, this is going to be a brand-new process. Hopefully, we'll have fewer appeals. We have some criteria now. We have a process now. So, you know, in the event that we have an uptick in appeals, then we might want to revisit that at some point. So I hope that maybe, you know, six months down the road, or, you know, a few months down the road even, that we would get a report back. Hey, how's it going? Is this working well?
I would certainly support that. Absolutely. All right. Other comments? Oh, Counselor Bednarz.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, a clarification point. The staff had come up with the new chapter, 86, so whatever it is, 86. How much of this is going to get incorporated into the Parks and Recreation? How much of this information, or the sentiment of this, there's a lot of good stuff in here that they've put, definitions, and timing, and, you know, the 30 days versus 15, and all that stuff that I'd kind of like to see there done. It was a lot of, well, you said, Counselor Anderson, that there's been a lot of work on this whole thing. I don't want to just brush that. I want to make sure that gets in.
All of that would still stand.
It would still all stand.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. My motion was just to direct staff to amend that part of the ordinance that has to do with the Urban Tree Commission, and just instead insert the.
Salem Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation.
Okay. I'm good with it, then.
I think Counselor, I think that Director Fernandez was going to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been kind of looking at the code as we've been talking, and it just preliminarily, I think we would probably omit 86020, just delete it out. But I think we would bring back a minor amendment to 13030, to add, what I would term the Bednarz amendment, to add one tree expert to SBRAB.
Okay.
So you'll probably see that, you know, in the upcoming ordinance, would be the engrossment of 86, and then also some, one minor change to 13030. That includes the tree expert.
I just, you know, there's been a lot of work put into this, and I don't want it to go to the side. And that's, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff here, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, no, everything else would stay. There's a couple of references, if the mayor's motion passes, obviously. You know, there's a couple of other references to the Urban Tree Commission. We'd simply change that and engross it to say Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Absolutely. Okay. Other comments? Counselor Lewis, and then Counselor Nanki.
Yes, I'm going to support the motion. I actually think this is a fair compromise. As one of the people who supposedly served on this committee, I have to be honest, it was not a real enjoyable experience, way out of my comfort zone. But in my opinion, from the beginning, it was driven because of a level of upsetness, anger. And I believe that laws, rules, statutes that come out of anger are not necessarily your best. We had six and a half pages of dysfunctional rules. We now have 17 pages of clearer rules, twice as many rules. And I think those rules will help us, guide us through the process. But I'm very satisfied with the compromise of the Parks Board as the appeal process. It gives the citizens a say. And here, ultimate say. And so I think that's what I hear from people. It's not necessarily "the" commission. That's the key. It's "the" involvement. And that involvement is part of this. And so I can support it.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to jump back to the composition of what the original Urban Tree Commission was, it was two members of Parks and Rec, one with urban forestry, which we've just added, three flex anybody's, which is kind of what SBRAB is now, and then we had a member of downtown Central Business District, or downtown Historic District, which would not be included in the Salem Parks and Rec Board. So, save for the seven versus nine, the composition is almost identical.
Good point.
But the one piece that, in regards to the amendment that was made earlier, which we shouldn't have any problem, but it should probably still be inside of whatever comes forward, to the extent that professionals meeting these standards are available in the community. I would hate for a position to go empty, because no one put their name up for it, because we don't get any appeals, which is kind of the other side. If you only end up with half of what we get now, that's a meeting of a new board once every three every three months, or four months, which I think does a disservice to their continuing involvement as well. So worst case, Parks Board is inundated with this. We could look at breaking that apart from down the line, but I think this is a great way to start it.
Great, thank you. All right, a call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one nay vote from Counselor Anderson. Thank you. All right, that's the end of hearings. We have one special order of business. Shall we take a break before we do this? Okay. We'll adjourn for just a brief break.
Point of order. Was yours a, there may have been a misunderstanding, whether yours was a, the final, the final motion. I think the expectation was that yours more amended the final motion, and there'd be a final vote on.
Yeah, if it was a substitute motion, we're done. If it's an amended motion, we're not. And I heard you to say it was an amended motion.
I think there was a misunderstanding, and I want to make sure that.
An amended motion?
That all the council gets to vote on that final, final issue.
What I said was, I moved to direct staff to amend the proposed ordinance.
Good.
So it's not an amended motion.
So the amendment, the amendment was added, the amendment to change it.
To change, so we need to come back and vote on this final.
That's correct.
That's right, okay.
We're coming back to first reading with the amended ordinance.
Okay, after the break. Pardon me.
The Chief tells staff to change the ordinance to include that. That's what we voted on.
Motion we need to make, or not?
So now that you called us back to order, I just wanted to clarify, and Counselor Anderson asked that I clarify, that the mayor's motion was the only motion on the floor. It was not a substitute motion, and so she, there's no need for a second vote, so votes have been taken.
That's fine, thank you very much. I guess my response to that, had it been, I would have gone ahead and voted, but I understand why I didn't, and I'm, and I've still, I stand by my vote against it.
Right, right. And then staff will come back to us with a revised. For first reading, right, for first reading. All right, we are back to order on this evening's meeting for the Salem City Council on September, where are we?
28.
Thank you, September 28.
Just later in the evening.
Yeah, it's just a little later in the evening. It's not even the next day yet, so we're doing well. We have an information report, and we have a presentation this evening. Wait a minute, I'm jumping ahead. We have a special orders of business on Capitol Mall Parking Meter Technology Project Update. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. Mark Beckel, Urban, interim Urban Development Director.
Next Park.
Yeah, NXX Parks and Streets guy. I want to give you an update and have some discussion on the progress of our Capitol Mall Parking Technology Project. This is a project that I think many of you are aware of, but just to quickly in review, in August of 2014, council approved an internal loan of $1.5 million from the Water and Sewer Fund, so that the city could begin replacement of its now obsolete parking meter inventory. It's becoming more and more difficult to fix and replace those meters as they age. Also, parking technology has improved vastly over the last decade or so, and it is time to move on. We have embarked on that project, and the type of technology that we will be installing is twofold. First, you've probably seen these, if you've been to Portland or any other large city, a multi-space pay station. This is where you would use your credit or debit card or coins, and then pay for the exact amount of time that you wish to park at a parking space, per the time allotment on that space, the time marking of the space, three-hour, 10-hour, whatever. You place the sticker on your car, and that is evidence that you've paid for your parking. In those areas where the entire block is not available for paid parking, where we're only talking a few spaces, also in front of the Capitol Mall itself, due to the uncertainty of their seismic project, construction project there, the actual Capitol building, excuse me, we will be using what we call smart meters, or single meter smart meters. Many of the same features as your pay station, but they are essentially just a very, very smart parking meter that can use your credit card, debit card, and coins. And then along with that is the replacement of our handheld citation devices, so that all of these new technology devices are synchronized and updated with the most recent way of doing citations. Our handhelds currently don't function as well as they used to. Originally, as directed, we began the project of putting together the requirements of how many pay stations and meters that we would have to replace and install with the new pay stations. The core of the Capitol Mall area was the area selected, and that would be the area that you see both in green and blue, the block faces. What happened is, using our parking consultant, we estimated a number of pay stations and smart meters that we believed would be necessary, based on the total number of parking meters needing to be replaced. As we brought CalA America, our vendor, on under contract, and we met with their representatives or field representatives, it became clear that to actually make those block faces work, we would have to purchase additional pay stations. That raised the cost of the project to a point where it was going to exceed the $1.5 million we had available, and would leave no project contingency. And so the decision was made to break the project area into two phases for implementation. And so the area that we have begun, in fact, we've already been pouring concrete pads and beginning the site work for Phase One, we'll call it, are the block faces in green. We will have those pay stations and meter heads installed, hopefully by the end of November, and have them, everything tested and operational in time for the short legislative session that occurs in late January, February. Then would give us the opportunity to evaluate the performance of those meters and look for, seeing if our revenue estimates are correct and how they work. The areas in blue are the areas that we did not have enough project funding to do as one, one large chunk. What we did is, when we found out that we would not have enough money to do all of them at once, we gave back to Public Works about $560,000 of funding that we would not be needing to do the areas in green, so that it would go back to the Water Sewer Fund. What we plan to do then is to finish Phase One and then move on to Phase Two. And what I'd like to talk to you tonight, counsel, is some options we would have as to how we want to then move on to the second phase of this project. This map here shows you all the areas outside of the downtown parking district that have paid spaces in them. Not every street block you see there has meters, per se, but those are areas that do have paid parking. The area in lavender or purple is the, we'll call the core Capitol Mall, and that was the original area that we were going to be, look at in placing meters. Then there's other areas outside of the downtown that, over time, as we do parking utilization studies, as we look at the cost-benefit analysis, we will, over time, replace those meters with the new technology. So the anticipated project timeline, under one option, would be to go ahead and begin installation, which we will, we've already done, will continue through October, operation in November, and then you'll see that we do an evaluation phase after legislative session. One item I would like to bring up to you is, because no project is ever simple, and this is certainly not a simple project, in the middle of all this, the world of technology is evolving, and the EMV technology is coming online nationwide. For those who don't know what that is, is your debit or credit card is now being, they're now being embedded, as you get new ones in the mail, they're now being embedded with a chip and PIN, and they require a special reader, and it helps prevent credit card, debit card fraud. The readers that we are getting with our Phase One devices are standard technology as they are today. If we were going to wait for the EMV readers to be available, we would have to put the entire project off until spring. What we are recommending is that we move ahead and put in the new machines with standard readers, and then switch them out in the spring when they become available. We've already budgeted for that. It's not a very large cost, and we feel like that's the proper sequencing of the technology. The only difference will be the way that it takes your card in and keeps it for a few seconds before it spits it back out to you. I know when I go to PDX to use the parking there at the airport, it takes my credit card, I panic for a second, and then it gives it back. And that's essentially what will happen over time with this new technology. One option is then to wait until June and budget for additional money to do those blue block faces, those additional block faces, and then doing the installation later in the fall. That would allow us time to phase the project, see how everything is going as far as revenues and technology and EMV upgrades. What it doesn't do is allow us to capture those, some of those block faces that you see in blue here, that would be missing the new technology. This change in phasing is probably new to the council, and I will say, this is something that we should have brought to you earlier this year. We should have brought you this information in May or June, and I apologize that we did not do that, and I take responsibility for that. Another alternative, if we wanted to accelerate the second phase of those blue-colored block faces, would be to overlap the two phases by beginning the process now of getting additional funding in place, and order the equipment and begin installation in June as opposed to the fall. To do that, however, we would need to have council approve some transfer resolutions and some supplemental budget work, so that we could bring back the $560,000 of loan authority that council gave us from the Water Sewer Fund. And then we believe that either through project savings in the existing project, Phase One project, or if need be, a small one-time transfer of general fund money, either way, we believe we can finish both Phase One and Two in an accelerated manner. The only, again, the only issue there is that you're now beginning to overlap project phases, and it does create a little bit more uncertainty if Phase One gets delayed, Phase Two gets a little delayed too. I would tell you, counselors, that this project is very complex and has a lot of moving pieces, and I do beg your patience as we go through this project. It is a very complex project to work two independent phases here. We think we can do it. So we looked at you for some direction as to whether you want us to proceed with the first phase now, and the second phase beginning in June, working through the budget, or if you would like to have us accelerate the process and overlap the two phases. So that would be our recommendation, and we'd be open to some discussion.
Okay, all right. For discussion, I saw so many hands go up at the same time, I'm just going to go around. I'll start with Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor McCoyd, and then Counselor Dickey. I think you had your hand up, and then Bednarz. Thank you.
A couple questions, and then I'll, just a couple comments. I think I understand this question. The 500, or $560,000 is the difference between the $933,000 and the $1.5 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then my other question is, I don't know how, you said, we discovered we're going to need 40 more of the meters. How many was the total that you needed before, not counting the 40?
The pay stations, we're going to, we are now going into Phase One. We're going to be installing 71 of these pay stations.
Okay.
And originally, we thought we needed 30, about 31 of them.
So that, that was my question. That seems like a pretty big jump for 40 units from, from 930,000 to 1.5, but you're saying you're more than doubling it.
Yeah, and my understanding, and again, some of this occurred before I became director, but my understanding is that the original math was based on just a raw number of meters converted to.
Got it, got it.
To pay stations.
As opposed to what it really looks like on the ground.
Exactly, Counselor, yeah.
Then, just to comment on the optional stuff, the, if you do them all at once, the pro that I see, or in favor of that, is you get total implementation at one time. The con from doing it in one phase is, where does the money come from? I understand it's the Water and Sewer, but it's going to have to come from there, and then maybe Water and Sewer needs it, so that's an issue of money. And then I also think against lumping them together is, you might need some time to work out bugs. You know, this Phase Two might move smoother if you've done Phase One and know, and have learned from that implementation.
More so the latter than the former. Director Fernandez assures me that the Water Sewer Fund has the money to loan us.
I'm certain that Mr. Fernandez can find the money.
Well, and if I may, I just want to be clear that it is a loan, not, so, and that it is good for the Water Sewer Fund, because it comes at a slightly, ever so slightly, higher percentage rate than what we get from the state of Oregon.
Okay, thank you.
And if I, might add on to a couple more of the pros, one being with the change in EMV, they will operate slightly differently, so we'll have to re-educate the community on, this is how they did work, this is now, what you need to do, wait for the car, don't yank the guts out of it, because you're growing impatient for your vehicle. And then, secondly, that the state still has a number of cash keys with dollars on them. The phasing with the blocks on the outside of the perimeter, still having the current meters, will allow them to use some of the cash that's remaining on that.
So that would be a pro to phasing it, the two things that you said.
Correct.
As opposed to phasing it in.
Or you can look at it as, you can move ahead, you can capture those funds that you should pay.
Yeah, that's correct as well.
There you go. Counselor Nanki, are you next? Did you have a question?
I was actually, my hand was up, I think, very early in the process, but you had called on the others, and I was at the end of that, as I added myself.
Counselor McCoyd, and then Counselor Dickey. All right.
So whose turn is it?
Counselor McCoyd.
Oh, okay.
You're up.
How important is the evaluation phase in Phase, the Phase One proposal? Is it that important to?
Well, it's going to occur regardless. I'm just, I have it up there to let you know that, you know, we obviously have to look to see how these new technology devices have made it through the legislative session, what were our revenues? How do our revenues compare to projections? Were people able to use them successfully? You know, did the technology work the way we wanted them to? Do they synchronize with the citation, handheld citation devices? A short legislative session is a great little baptism in fire for a new technology, and so we're going to have to do that evaluation phase regardless. I just put it in there to show you that if we're a little more deliberate, we have more time to work out the bugs and the tweaks, like Counselor Anderson had said. It's not to say that we couldn't condense the project into the overlapping phases, it's just, it gives us more time to work out bugs in one phase before the next, so.
I'm not sure if you answered my question, but, okay, I'll rephrase it. Would you rather have an evaluation phase before you went to the last half of the installation to make sure you've got everything wired and you move forward, or you want to do the whole dang thing at once?
Sure, as a project manager, I would love to have some time between the next two phases. Yes.
Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I have a couple questions, and a comment, too. The EMV, that's, I mean, that really is the newest thing. When we go visit our son in Canada, that's all they have. I mean, you go to a restaurant, and they have these little handheld things, and if you have a card that doesn't have a chip in it, they look at you like, what do I do with this? So this is, you know, we're, I mean, just probably just here in our area, we're a little bit behind the times in that, in the U.S., and just getting those cards that have the chips in them. So absolutely, we should be moving ahead with that. I guess, a question I would have, when you're talking about timing that second phase, would, if that was moved up, so you were talking about ordering the equipment sooner and phasing it sooner, would that allow for purchasing the EMV equipment for Phase Two, or would you be in the same situation where you'd have to be purchasing it later after you had purchased other equipment?
My hope would be that we would, we would purchase the EMV upgrade readers for the first phase, and the Phase Two machines would arrive with the EMT, or EMV technology with them. Does that sound right there? I guess I should introduce Sarah Long. She's our project. She's our project manager.
Hi, Sarah.
Does that, does that sound right? Why don't you come to the microphone?
Sarah Long, project manager with the urban development department. The EMV is something that we are all still learning about, and Sandra Montoy is also here with our finance department, who has been great in sort of helping educate everybody. And the way that the EMV is working is we've been working with our vendor to find out how soon we could get those readers, and what they're learning from their vendors is, we can put in the order, but due to sort of the certification processes that those readers have to go through, the soonest that we're probably gonna be able to have them in hand to get them installed is probably gonna be around February. Obviously, that definitely coincides with the legislative session. So if we were to order a Phase Two, if we were to order, you know, before that February mark, there would be the chance that they'd have to change them out when they actually arrived. If we waited until we knew we could get our hands on them, there'd be a better chance that we could, we could actually be able to get them installed at the same time.
So yeah, ideally, yes, the new phase would arrive with the readers, and we would change out the standard ones at the same time.
Follow? Go ahead, Counselor Dickey.
Okay, thanks. So just another question. So in terms of getting the pay and display, I mean, and looking at your map, I mean, it looks like we're, I mean, kinda like we have now, only even more so, we've got lots of different parking all around the Capitol Mall, the downtown area with, so we'll have everything from maybe those keys that work to completely free parking, to coin meters, to pay and display, to smart meters or whatever. I, you know, I'm wondering with the pay and display, and, you know, I don't know if that's going to leave the consumer confused. I'm a little bit, I mean, a little confused with all of the options we have. So somebody puts a pay and display on their car, you go somewhere, you automatically assume that you can go park anywhere. It's, you know, there's a place where you have to pay to park, and as long as you have time left on that, I mean, will that be clear to people exactly where those spots are? Or, I mean, will they know? Or is it just people will know that if they have 20 minutes left on their parking, and they move their car to where there's a meter, they then have to pay for the meter even if it's in the same zone?
Well, counselor, one of the things we'll have to educate more than anything is our own enforcement staff. And our intent would be is if you've paid for parking, you've paid for parking. And so while the idea is that you pull into your space, you go to the nearest kiosk, buy your sticker, put it on your car, if you happen to be around the block or across the street, and you're in a more traditional space, the traditional meter, if that sticker is there, the enforcement officer should not cite you because you paid for your parking.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Counselor Bednarz.
So the first question was answered, and I just, it's such an important one to me, which is the money that we're taking from the water sewer fund is our reserve funds that we have to carry, some $10 million if I remember correctly, and they earn it-
30 million.
30 million dollars. And it earns, we have to have that as reserve in case. And it earns an interest rate. By doing this, we're able to basically give that a little bit better interest rate by law. By law, it's mandated this way, so it's a benefit at both ends, on the end of the parking meters and on the end of the water sewer fund. That was clear, but I want to make sure the public knows we're not taking money misappropriated to put into some other location that we're not supposed to, and they'll all get paid back. And I just want to touch a little small things here. Are we gonna replace the whole kiosks or just the mechanical EMV unit within the kiosk?
Just the reader part comes out. The rest, my understanding is the rest of the machine stays the same. It's just the reader.
And I guess this naturally leads me to, it shouldn't cost the city anything other than the labor to uninstall and reinstall the new ones, because what is this company gonna do with all these non-EMV reader devices? I mean, if it's, if the market is saying everything's going to EMV, period, it's done. It seems like it should be, should negotiate a better price. I mean-
You know, I believe it's the cost of doing business, but you wanna?
As during the evaluation process, the topic of EMV came up, and at that time, our vendor, Cali America, could not give us what the price would be for those readers, knowing that most likely they would be more expensive because of the different encryption that they have, but their vendors had not come out with the equipment yet. So what we did is, within their contract, there was a negotiated twofold. It was either X percent above what the cost was, or it was a not-to-exceed-per-unit amount, and they stayed below the not-to-exceed-per-unit amount and stayed within the 5 percent markup that they were allowed as part of their contract.
As to where those old readers will go, I, some country in Africa, I have no idea.
They're not using EMV cards. Okay.
Silverton, yeah, Silverton's a little behind.
The other one, it's just a simple comment. I frequent State Street between 12th and on out, and would love to see that, and that particular is, one of the, when I was looking at the map here, it's one of the more retail, heavily-used retail areas that we're talking, everything else here is relative to the state capital, other than in front of the Ike Box, that one section of Chamacara Street. Everything else is moderately used, but boy, that one on State Street is heavily used. And we'd love to see that technology moved over there as well. Just a request.
Yeah, well, and one of the things we're looking at, counselor, is, you know, we have, we have an amount of money we budget each year for just standard meter replacement. And, you know, so rather than replacing old meters with old meters, we will be looking at seeing how many old meters we could replace with new single meters, again, those smart meters, those single meter heads. And some of the areas that we'd be looking at is are there some high utilization areas outside of this core Capitol Mall? For example, in front of the Sassy Onion, or Adam's Ribs, or whatever, you know, on State Street.
Exactly my thought.
Or on Willamette, you know, the Willamette side of State Street, whatever. Are there areas that we know we have good turnover, it's cost-effective? Well, I couldn't tell you standing here is how many of those heads we could purchase right now, but that's something we're gonna look into. Also, we hope to have some project savings that we could reinvest as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions from councilors? Counselor Bennett? Because I have some comments and questions, but I just want to make sure we get everybody. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions. And I think the one's been answered already is whether or not we could purchase the EMV option as the purchase, and they would upgrade as that became available. But how many spares are we planning on having for failure, vandalism, destruction?
We have one extra that'll be residing in the Parking Services headquarters. It'll act as a spare and a training device. My understanding is these things are very durable.
Robust.
They're very robust, they're very durable. You know, Sarah, you can explain, but I think our experience has been from other cities is that they're pretty resistant to vandalism and damage.
Yes. What Mark said was correct. At any point in time, if we notice that we're having issues with a certain feature, we could look at actually just having those replacement parts on hand, but for right now, the thought was we'll have one station residing at Parking Services. The other purpose for it is with any software upgrades, whether they're city software upgrades that are gonna be kind of interconnected with the Cali system, or software upgrades on the Cali side, we'll have a test one so we can kind of run everything through there. IT can make sure it's all working before it gets released into sort of the general population of parking technology.
Okay. And then, if I may, can you go back and expand upon the comment you had in regards to seismic, and then just the use of the single meter head as compared to the pay station? And what our criteria is? How many along a short block face or a long block face, and are we actually utilizing more devices than we really have to?
Okay, well, first of all, with the Capitol Mall seismic upgrade project that was before the legislature in this past session, you know, we, it left us an alert. Here we are, we're trying to finalize a contract, it's already-
We're trying to help them. So why are we paying more money to help them?
Well, it's our street, and we get the revenue. They don't really look at it as help. So, yes, help would be-
Well, help would be the people who come there actually get a good deal, and so we have to pay more because of a project they're having. Why not just wait for everything until June 2016 after the session and do it all at once? No extra cost for EMV?
Well, I look at it this way, counselor, we have to replace all of our meters eventually. They're just obsolete, and so it's just a matter of when. And so, you know, what we don't want to do is put those very expensive pay and display kiosks up, and so the next cheapest alternative is to use these smart meters. Those smart meters, if the Capitol is completely reconfigured, and they take away some of that on-street parking in the front like they've thought about, those meter heads can be put somewhere else, because we certainly have 1,600 meters or so that we need to replace. So whatever we buy to put in front of the Capitol can easily be moved somewhere else and implemented somewhere else, like in front of the Sassy Onion, or the Ike Box, or whatever. So I don't see it as any kind of waste of money. We know from experience that the legislature is not keen on our parking, you know, they have to pay for parking anyway, so I don't know if they see it as a benefit. What they will see is that they only have to pay for parking for the prescribed amount of time they need.
Right.
And so they can cater the amount of parking they need to pay for, which to me is a benefit to them, in either of the devices, the pay stations or the smart meters. When the legislature would plan to do the seismic upgrade, the building needs it, we just don't know what's, which session they would finally authorize the funding. So it may never happen. And if that's the case, someday, maybe we'll switch out those smart meter heads with the kiosks, the pay stations.
I think it might be better to start with a kiosk and then just have some extra, depending on how many, how many meter heads in a row to equal the cost of a kiosk? Where's the breakpoint on that?
Let me do some quick math.
While she's doing that math-
If it is not my strong suit in life.
While she's doing that math, some of the criteria we look at is if there's just a few paid spaces on that block face, the single meter heads are cheaper. Now, I don't know where the breakpoint is, I think-
It's about, once you add in the cost of sort of the add-ons and things of that nature, we're looking at about 14 of the single head to one of the pay, the multi-space. We're getting those for about 400 and change, as opposed to it's about 7,000 for the pay stations, so it's, there's a dramatic difference there.
Well, yeah, especially when you think of how far am I gonna walk to go to a pay station? If it's 14 spaces, I'm going at least seven cars away from myself.
Well, no, that's the break-even point.
That's the break-even.
That's not the geographic break-even.
But, no, but it's break-even dollar-wise. So if I have a pay station for 14 cars, equivalent dollars, how far am I walking? What's my longest walk to a pay station? How many car spaces away from it?
We're averaging two. Sarah, I believe we're averaging two, two pay stations per block face, right?
And that's where you get, here. Sorry.
We're averaging, we're averaging about two pay stations per block face.
About two pay stations per block face. It'll be approximately 8.5 parking spaces per station. Industry average says that you need to have at least no, around 10 to 12 is what you want. So we'll actually be a little bit lower than the industry standard, so people will be closer to the pay stations and won't have to walk quite as far.
But it sounds like it would be cheaper for us just to buy single meter heads then if you're going eight cars versus 14.
I mean, we didn't run the numbers on all of that. Part of the goal was to clean up the area with the existing meter heads and put in the pay stations and enhance the streetscape.
Yeah.
There's an aesthetic value to it.
If a single meter head is 14 meters, and you're getting a pay station that can deal with eight, then we're paying double what we would have to pay if we just went all single meter heads. At least that's how the math goes.
And that's the straight up cost. I think you also have to figure in the longevity of the meter heads versus the kiosks, and how often maintenance is required, et cetera. We do know that, we haven't had experience with the new meter heads, but the current meters that we have require a lot more maintenance than we would anticipate out of the kiosk. So there's more to the equation versus the break-even than just straight up cost.
We understand that, and look at that number again.
And keep in mind, every individual meter head, we have to empty into a cart, you know, the coins. So the labor to service the-
But it will tell you when it's full as well, or how much cash has gone into it via the software? So you don't just go empty one for the sake of emptying it if it's got three quarters in it?
Well, I imagine, the way we do it now, it's just by route. They push the big cart, and they just empty, 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 so, yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of comments, and one is that I think that the issue of the cash keys for the state of Oregon is a red herring. We all knew they had cash keys. We all voted a long time ago to do this and to do this whole system, and I think that's what we're here tonight to talk about, is are we gonna get this done? And we've been waiting a long time. Everybody knew it was gonna come. No surprise to the cash key cardholders or whatever they are. And as far as how many, you know, the industry standard, I would hope to goodness that we would go as close to the industry standard. If people can't walk, you know, the necessary space, that's kind of, we should, I'm saying in Salem, we shouldn't cluster more of those pay stations than the industry tells us we need. Let's not be, you know, foolish that way. But I think that all of these other issues and, you know, testing it on a Phase One, Phase Two, we never talked about that before. We never needed that before. Nobody said to us before, we have to do a small area so we can test this out. We always knew there would be some testing, but we need to move forward. So I, I'm very ready, ready to vote for this. Let's see. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
There's something to vote for, Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that staff prepare for council consideration any necessary transfer or supplemental budget resolutions required to accelerate the implementation of new meter technology in the remainder of the core Capitol Mall area currently planned for Phase Two. I further move that staff build in the necessary funding during the fiscal year 16, '17 budget process to expand the replacement of meters outside of the core Capitol Mall with new technology, starting with areas of highest utilization, such as State Street from Church Street to 14th Street.
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if I could speak to my motion. I will agree with staff, they should have come back. This is really laid in coming to us, what this is, and where we are in this project. A number of you, I don't even know if, a number of you were here to even vote on this when we first saw it. I think it was with the previous council. This thing moved out, our understanding, and the mayor and I were on the parking task force that put this stuff together, was really much, much bigger project than you're seeing even in the proposal I'm making. This was to cover virtually all of the metered area in the city. There was no talk of let's practice around the Capitol, and then we can maybe move another block and another block. And Counselor Dickey, I think, caught it exactly right. We would, the biggest complaint, and I work in the Capitol Mall, and I go to Sassy Onion and Adam's Rib, and, you know, all these places we talk about that have these meters, Ike Box, the complaint is quarters. The complaint is, I gotta carry a bag of quarters to go anywhere in Salem. What is this? The 19th century? You know, that's the kind of reaction you get. No, it's not, and that's why we passed this whole new program, not to goof around with questions of let's practice, or for the staff to make a unilateral decision not to spend money we authorized. And that's just unacceptable, when we make that kind of decision without at least coming back to us. And I know why it happened. It was a period of transition, and everybody was moving. I don't blame anybody, it's just what happened. But I think we ought to correct it. If my motion puts a corrective move on this thing and lets us start moving out on this issue, there's not gonna be a change at the state Capitol. That's always been, this seismic upgrade has been for a number of years, an issue we've worried about. We've worried about it with our building department, we've worried about it with our parking meter. Let's quit worrying about it, and if those guys ever vote for this thing, then we'll start worrying, because hell will have frozen over at that point. No, it's probably not true. It'd just be very, very cold there. But it's time to get this thing underway, and I am so disappointed, I can't tell you how- No, probably not true. It'd just be very, very cold there. But, it's time to get this thing underway. And I am so disappointed, I can't tell you how disappointed I am, that I'm looking at an area I know real well, along State Street from Church all the way to 14th, on the south side, is going to be those old quarter meters. But, apparently, I can go to a kiosk. Now, this is the way this is being, and I can get a thing and put it on my window and somehow have bought time. And I'll tell you, I join you, Mayor, they, the state has known this is coming for some time, for at least a couple of years.
They were on our task force.
Yeah. And I think that they may have some cash keys or whatever those are. You know, if you all want to suggest, I mean, I'll accept a friendly amendment, says we cash those in, and we share those with the neighbors in Grant Neighborhood who have to put up with these people parking in front of their houses for free, taking all the parking they've got all the way up beyond Market Street. It's just really hard to be sympathetic with that situation. I really ask you to support this. It's time to get off the dime on this thing and start moving it along and move us into the 21st century in a parking technology. We've got a long way to go, and we gotta get started as fast as we can, but I'm just not, I really am not willing to accept anything less than trying to get this thing going. I mean, this doesn't get us started. This is the easy way out. We need to push this thing. It's going to have to be pushed. It's too easy to say from year to year, well, let's test it another half-block, let's test it another half-block, and we'll test this thing for five or six years before we cover the area we anticipated in our original motion. It's time to get going here.
Yeah. I would certainly support the motion and I support what councillor Bennett is saying. I have a couple of requests. I'm wondering why we can't have the new system on the south side of State Street as well. I think it's going to be very confusing to people. One day, they park on one side of the street, one day, they park on the other side of the street, and they've got, oh, a surprise, two different systems, and would seem to me not impossible. I mean, we're the ones that are drawing the boxes and coloring them red and green and whatever. Can't we just do that? Can't we say that tonight?
Madam Mayor, you can. You can add block faces to what we're calling Phase Two. That would increase the cost of Phase Two.
Sure, sure.
So, either-
Well, they're going to be done eventually anyway, right?
Yes, hopefully, yes.
Yes, they will.
And so, the question would be just the mechanics of the funding. Would you want to take that additional cost out of general fund, or would you want to then authorize a larger loan from the Water Sewer Fund?
Authorize a larger loan. My motion covers that, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah, it does. It's bring us resolutions that accelerate this process. It's leaving it up to staff to describe it, to describe the funding mechanisms, and then council gets to vote.
Yeah.
And if you don't like it, you'll vote no. If it looks like an unsustainable idea to you, you'll vote no. We'll look at the numbers very closely, though, because right now, we watched a million and a half decrease to 900,000 without a vote on our part. It just changed. This is, I'm asking us to get back in charge of this program and get this thing moving.
As a second part of my comment, I would like staff to come back with us, to us, with this flow chart. In June of 2014, July of 2014, we were presented with the Capitol Mall New Parking Technology Report and presentation by staff, and it included, it must have, because I had them together in my notebook, these spreadsheets. And what the spreadsheet does is to show that the one-time expense of $1,438,800, so $1.5 million, was the amount of money needed, which we were going to borrow from the Public Works Fund. And then, this chart shows a proposal that explains the costs and the revenue over the next few years, and it shows that that's the way to pay the debt. So, what I'd like to see is another set of these for the area that we're starting and for the other areas as was proposed by staff, because then we know exactly how much we are going to need to borrow in order to fund the implementation of the meters, and we know what the expected revenue is going to be and how many years we're going to be paying off this. I was a little nervous in the staff report that we had two weeks ago, that indicated that some of the money, the revenue from the meters of what you were calling then Phase One, was going to be used to buy the meters for Phase Two, because then, how were we paying off Phase One? So, I'd like to go have staff look at this and bring this back to us again, because this was a really good presentation and a really good analysis. And it was upon what I based, you know, my confidence that, yes, we can borrow this money and we can pay it back.
We can do that, Madam-
So, I just would like to have that. Okay, are we ready for the question? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor McCoy.
So, I understand the motion, but is there any, how far does this push everything back? Because I guess my point, you're now delaying the whole system X number of months when it's, I mean, when can we expect if you come back and it costs 2 million bucks and it's wherever it is? What's the timeline and when are we going to get to where we need to be? You're going to have to rebid and start everything all over again, which I think is what-
Oh, no.
No, I think what you're doing with this motion is getting back on the timeline we agreed to when we began this process. And we leave it, I think, by, the motion leaves it open enough for if we see fiscal problems, we won't vote for the issues as they come before us. But, this gives staff the ability to give us these numbers the mayor is talking about and take us into the next budget cycle. And if you go back to your Phase One, Phase Two, it essentially makes it flexible enough to recompress this thing and get this thing resolved by next year.
So, we pass this, it's still going to have, we're still beginning installation in October of 15?
That's occurring regardless.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we're going to get back in a report?
We're going to be ahead of it.
The add-ons you've got, is that what we're going to get?
We have the element Phase Two, Phase Three.
And in discussions, we've got, remember, we're starting with over $500,000 in the kitty. I mean, we've given back over $500,000 already authorized, and our plan had that. And in talking with staff today about this, it appears the general fund exposure, if we approve the whole thing, I mean, we can talk about this. What we aren't doing is just locking ourselves down to just a few blocks in the Capitol Mall area we're starting to expand out, but our exposure looks potentially as low as $50,000 to the general fund. We're not talking big dollars here, but we need to see it. That's the thing. I mean, we can talk about it, but we really need to sit down and see it in the kind of spreadsheet the mayor showed, so we can tell what's going on here. What we know that voted for this is this plan has radically changed from what we voted for. And I think the feeling is, we want to get back for the plan we voted for or as close to it as we can. And I believe my motion puts us on that track.
All right. Councillor Nanki?
Yep.
No?
I'm waiting for the vote to make a motion to extend.
I would, oh, second.
I think we have, we have like three and a half minutes. If we're ready to actually make the vote on councillor Bennett's motion, we should stay in line with that and then I'll interrupt.
We're going to call for the question. Does that include, councillor Bennett, would that include the south side of State Street? Or are we leaving that as a separate?
No, it's in there.
It's included.
It's in there.
Could you reread the motion?
I call it out. And I think Mark mentioned it, too. There's the south side of State Street, there's State Street down to 14th.
Yeah, over to 14th, 15th.
There's the Ike Box, there's some other, I mean, I'm very interested in the municipal parking lot downtown. There are a series of places that we can talk about.
I was certainly only going to ask you to reread the motion, just because-
Yes, I move that staff prepare for council considerations. Get another bite of this, okay? Any necessary transfer or supplemental budget resolutions required to accelerate the implementation of new meter technology in the remainder of the core Capitol Mall area currently planned for Phase Two. I further move that staff build the necessary funding during the fiscal year 1617 budget process to expand the replacement of meters outside of the core Capitol Mall with new technology, starting with areas of highest utilization, such as State Street from Church Street to 14th Street.
Okay. All right. That's the motion before us. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Excellent. Madam Mayor, I would move a 15-minute extension.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by councillor Nanki and seconded by McCoy?
McCoy.
McCoy, councillor McCoy. All those in favor of the extension signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I draw your attention, there's one information report in the agenda, and we will now move on to ordinances. Would the recorder please introduce the first ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 2215 relating to the commercial production of marijuana, amending Salem Revised Code to restrict commercial production of recreational marijuana to indoor production sites within the general industrial, intensive industrial zones and indoor or outdoor sites within exclusive farm use zone.
Thank you. Councillor Nanki, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion, and I would move staff recommendation for consideration by the body.
It's been moved by councillor Nanki and seconded by councillor Benards to move staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Yes, councillor Nanki?
Just quickly, I'll be voting in opposition because there is a permissive component to this, even though it's going to the Planning Commission that would allow it in certain zones, albeit I'm in favor of having it restricted from certain zones. So, that being said, I will vote against my own motion.
And councillor Anderson, your hand was up.
I'm familiar with that, councillor Nanki, from an earlier motion I made several months ago. Yes.
That's my job, this councillor.
That was with four weeks on the council, not 14 years or whatever. But, yeah, I have a question about the alternatives. If it goes to the Planning Commission, it will also then come, can come to the city council if somebody appeals it.
No, they'll come back to us anyway.
Okay, okay, it'll come back to us automatically, then that's fine. I'm going to support councillor Nanki's motion, not councillor Nanki.
All right. Are there further questions, comments? All right, call for the question. All those in favor of the ordinance first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, and nays are councillor Nanki and myself. All right, second reading. Would the recorder please introduce this ordinance and take the roll call vote?
Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 1615 relating to vehicle for hire and transportation network company licenses, amending SRC 30.005, .010, .040, .050, 055, 700, 705, 710, 715, 725, 730, 735, 740, 800, 805, 810, 815, and 845, repealing Salem Revised Code Section 30.830, 840, and declaring an emergency. Councillor Dickey?
Aye.
Councillor Benards?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Bennett?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Nanki?
Aye.
Councillor McCoy?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. That passes. All right, then we have a second, second reading. Would the recorder please introduce ordinance bill number 1715 and take a roll call vote?
Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 1715 relating to prohibiting enclosed areas of structures subject to flooding within the floodplain overlay zone, amending Salem Revised Code Section 601.005 and 045. Councillor Benards?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Bennett?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Nanki?
Aye.
Councillor McCoy?
Aye.
Councillor Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes. And would you, would the recorder please introduce the third second reading of ordinance bill number 2115?
Ordinance Bill Number 2115 relating to medical marijuana permitting persons 21 and over to enter medical marijuana facilities, amending Salem Revised Code Section 31.080, and declaring an emergency. Councillor Benards?
Aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Bennett?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Nanki?
Nay.
Councillor McCoy?
Aye.
Councillor Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Nay. Thank you. Ordinance passes with two no votes, councillor Nanki and Mayor Peterson. Okay, it's time for public comment. Do we have anyone who has signed up?
I didn't get a chance to sign up, but I would-
Did you want to make public comment about something that's not on the agenda?
Well, I'm not really sure, to be honest with you. I wanted to make a comment about the ordinance that we just passed, just to see how much are there?
No. No.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have no further business. We are adjourned.